It's five thirty, I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll open the floor for public comment. If anyone wishes to make a public comment, you'll have three minutes. We approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Gavin McCracken, I live at one seven six South Main Street. And I'm here protesting the proposed sale of the land behind there, the parcel. Well, you know what the parcel is, anyway. Uh, we weren't really sure how these meetings work, so I wasn't sure if I was supposed to come to this part or the part at seven, so here I am. Um, is this, am I at the right time, at the right spot?
Either one.
Okay, well, we have more people coming at the seven one, who will also probably want to say something, but I don't know if you guys got the petition that I made or not. Um, it doesn't have a ton of signatures on it, but it is one hundred percent of the homeowners on that street, so. Everybody on the street is completely against it for basically the same reasons. And, yeah, I mean, I guess that's all I really have, is we don't want it, and we're gonna fight it. And if you decide to, please don't sell it to them, just, we're begging you not to, that's it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any more public comment? Taylor?
Taylor Mattley, do I need to say my address too?
We know who you are.
One seven, five seven, thirty fourth Street. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for letting us use the Griswold for Spirit of Algen. It was a really good event, we had a great turnout. Our caterer said he thought there were well over two hundred people there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more public comments, we'll move on to item number three, roundtable discussion amongst council members. Have anything for roundtable? Peter, are you gonna say something?
I did have the meeting with Huntington, went well, about the sinking fund. Some of those funds are coming up and they are readdressing where they're gonna be put. And they understand, you know, to optimize with the latter as well as looking at what the Fed rates are and the possibility of a future cut, although that sounds like that's probably gonna be next year now. So, it'll be, you know, a mixture of short term and longer term. Investments, because of course you want to, some short term that are getting better rates. But you also want to have some in some longer term, because if those rates start cutting, those will at least continue to provide income off of them. We don't want like another twenty twenty where we have zero. So, try to wave through those ups and downs of the market, so. So, I felt comfortable with what they're, what they're doing.
Peter, did you guys discuss, um, them coming to a meeting? Are we kind of looking for that June or July timeframe?
Yeah, they're still planning on a meeting, so, as well as probably future to give us more read, more updates maybe once a year. I said, I could just deal with a report or something, at least to say, this is what we're doing, this is where we're at. Because we haven't really looked at that, that closely in the past, and I felt like maybe we're. We probably should have something at least once a year to give an update where we're at and where we're going with it.
Uh, thanks, Peter. One, uh, one thing that I wanted to bring up, I would like us to, uh, at maybe a future meeting, maybe even our next meeting. I have a conversation about clawing back the parking spaces, uh, by Mayhem Park that we. Had given over to the Leggits for their building, and they. Have not used them, and I don't know whether we're planning on using them for that business. But, uh, I think we need to take them back, so, I'd like to get that. I'm going to have that put on the agenda, I just wanted to let you all know I'm gonna do that.
Do you want to have that discussion now? I mean, this is an open meeting.
If we have, if we have the time.
You have the time, it appears, for the study session agenda.
So, uh, yeah, does anyone have any? Issue with, with that?
I don't have an issue with it, I brought it up in the past, that if they're not gonna build like they said, that, you know, whatever that they originally planned, if that's not gonna come to fruition, then we should probably take them back.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree.
It's those parking spaces, uh, by Mayhem Park that are, the slope spaces right on the side of the building. There. Uh, they originally were gonna put, uh, balcony or patio kind of over top of that, and so we. Gave them that right away and that, those parking spaces, and then they opened a wedding store there, so.
Oh, okay. It was, I think before, a year, coming back on council, so yeah.
Yeah, it was a while ago.
They had like this whole design plan, and that's why we approved it, but then the, I don't think that's ever coming to fruition that I see in the future. Maybe we should have a discussion again with them, if they don't have the plans for it, they may just be willing to say, well, we're not gonna do it. Might not be a big deal.
Do we, do we have any programs for businesses that have reserved parking spaces in public lots?
Originally, I don't think it was intended to stay a parking spot, that's the issue that we have, is that they were gonna put this balcony deck.
Correct.
Yeah, so, nobody else has private spaces that are on public lots that I'm aware of.
I think that Cove and Tilt do right across the street.
Those are, are actually owned by them, that land is owned.
Oh, really?
Private lots. There's some of those in these parking lots where the land extends, it's still like, looks like a city lot, and technically we probably paid for paving it. But it is their land underneath of it.
Do we know that, what that really entails, that just, uh?
Yeah, so it starts with the conversation between city staff and the property owner. And Roger, Mayor Bird, the reason I ask if you guys wish to discuss, I, multiple council members over the past four years. I said, hey, can we just, you know, previous council members too, can we just claw this back, can we take these parking spaces back? If I recall correctly, the development agreement as part of the sale. Gave us the authority to take that back at any time that it's deemed that the project isn't moving forward. And I think it's safe to say the project's not moving forward. I've had, uh, back then, I had conversations with the property owner slash developer. And they have mentioned, yeah, when if the city ever really wants these back, they'll be willing to, you know, go through the process of us getting it back. Those are ones that the city does maintain as part of plowing. It's just easy for us to plow that whole area, going down to the riverfront off, uh, Brady. Councilmember Reading, yeah, the Cove, those spots that are right, that area is kind of weird. The parking spaces along the south side of the Cove's building is owned by the Cove. The spaces north of the Tilt building is owned by Tilt. The city owns the driveway, the alleyway the city owns, and we own five or six spaces on the back corner along Hubbard. Where we put the dumpster enclosure, so. That is the only area, um, that we have private parking spaces, uh, behind Country House Furniture here. Where that dumpster is, and then where, uh. Second Chance, uh, resale store is. That area is, also is owned by the building owners, where the dumpster is and that pavement is. But we have, uh, easement there for ingress egress, maintenance and construction, and we got that. When we did the Cutler Street parking lot, because it really is a public area, and it's used by the public, and so we worked with those property owners to be able to pave that. And secure the future location for a public dumpster. Off my head, I don't know of any other sites in the city downtown parking lots that are owned or reserved. Uh, Pizza Hut used to put the little hats out. We received quite a few complaints from the downtown merchants. And the DDA asking how can they reserve three parking spaces, can we do it? And we said, no, people can't reserve parking spaces, so we talked to the Pizza Hut management and said, you guys can't just put your pizza hats, that's why I call them car hats. To reserve their spaces, those are for the public. So. That's how that works.
And really, um, those parking spaces that we're talking about there, they really haven't prevented anybody from parking there or told any, you know.
They, they, they got, they got signs.
Up there, but I know during.
Good times at the gazebo doesn't pay attention to those signs. They let me know they won't pay attention to those signs, I said, that's cool. But yeah, and then they are, I don't know if you guys have parked there before. Park at your own risk, especially if you're the driver, you open that door. Gravity helps you get out of your car. If you're the passenger, hopefully you have some upper body strength, you have some core strength, because you need to work to get out of your car on that side.
I think Myers bumper to bumper, their parking along the building is also.
Yeah, thank you, Peter, that, Parker just said Peter's correct in my ear. So, the, the parking spaces along Myers bumper to bumper, and the lot between Perrigo's Outlet Store and Myers bumper to bumper, those four or five spaces right along there are private property. I will start that process of working with the property owner.
Thank you. Just, go ahead.
Did you have anything else about that, Roger, I don't want to interrupt, okay.
I'm all good.
I was just gonna bring up, I know in the regular session, we have a couple requests for use of Griswold. And we had discussed that at some of our budget planning, and kind of came up with a plan for that. Just kind of wondering what. If we wanted to start enacting that now, or at the budget year?
I'm fine with enacting it at the budget year currently, just because. Then we can actually sit down, and if we want to actually have a policy and something that the staff can pre-approve based on that policy, we can get that all formalized.
I thought council said they didn't want to do that.
I didn't want to do it. But I'm saying if that's what the council wants to do and have that set up, you know, I'm just one person on the council, so if everybody else wants that. That's how it'll be, and so, I think we should do it that way, just so it's clear, because not a lot of people bother to come to our budget session and hear the discussion or have much input on it.
Okay, just in consideration of those requests, I kind of wanted to have a little clarification on, on where we're standing with that, and, I mean, what is council's thoughts on? Having some sort of parameters for approving? Non.
Yeah, I think it's.
On five oh one C three requests.
Right. I, I, I think it's a good idea, but it seems like every time we begin to have that discussion, it all just unravels, and so I'm not sure. How we come up with a cohesive. Policy that's gonna fit everybody that's gonna come. And I, I like the idea of having. A way for staff to just make, do quick approvals for, uh. Especially the, the ones that we always see, or the ones that are just sort of, we would probably consider no brainers, but, um. I don't know, I think it would take some discussion on our part to figure out what, how, how to make that an all encompassing policy. I don't know how that helps us tonight, though.
I just think it seems like every time it comes up, we sit here just like we are now. And we look silly.
Well, the policy that was pulled before for, I think, Seattle or somewhere else, if we wanted to look at something like that, or something where it's just a point system similar to how we do the Oprahs. That, hey, if you meet this minimum, so it doesn't necessarily have to be a nonprofit, it's like, is it free to the public, here's this many points. Are you a nonprofit, here's this many points. Oh, you meet the level, so now you're above that, you get one time a year at fifty percent rate. If you want beyond that, then you have to go to council if you want free or whatever, if that's what we want to sit down and say, here's how it works. Because if, my issue is, of course, yeah, you got ones that are not, pretty much are nonprofits, they're, they're just doing their thing, they just don't want to deal with. Going and becoming a full nonprofit and all the extra stuff, if all that they're doing is like, one thing a year. They're just raising some money to send to the Red Cross, or to send to whatever charity that they've chosen to use. But they don't want to be themselves, so a charity themselves unless they, so, that's where I'm like, it could be something as simple as that, free to the public, it's. You know. It's, we could come up with that, but it's, it's very difficult, even when I was looking through that Seattle policy, it's like, do we want something this complicated?
Yeah, and I think I, I brought forward like three or four different communities, and trying to make something that fits our needs was kind of difficult. Even in a, a small group with Peter and I, just looking at it, so, I do like that idea, though. That point system seems like something that, if everybody's willing to pursue, could look into it at some point, but.
I'm just not a fan of discounting.
Yeah, I, I understand that, too.
I mean, we don't have the funding for stuff, and. So, we're basically giving away that money.
And then the, the catch twenty-two of that is, they may find somewhere else to be entirely, you know, and that's, that's the hard, hard thing to think about is, but.
If they find somewhere else that gives it to them. Or power to them.
That's why it's a little more favorable of at least it's, here's a fifty percent discount, or it's just a flat, so that it's, you're still. And it's like a one time a year, so it's not an abusive thing. That's where I was like, okay, some of those sounded like decent ways to, to deal with it, and then it's. My whole view has always been that, that's there for the community use, it's a public building. And I want to see it used more, and sometimes it, it may have to be at a discounted rate. I would love if everybody paid full, full, full rate, because technically it's not even that expensive. It really isn't, when in the grand scheme of things. So I also can understand to just say, oh, it's just, no, there's no discount. It's just, this is the rate.
Yeah, we went over, and Parker put in a lot of work to come up with the rates, and then we discounted five or six. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me.
So, if we're saying we're gonna hold off until the new fiscal year to enact any new policy. Does that put us, where does that leave us for tonight? What is the feeling? Are we just doing what we have done in the past?
That, that's my feeling on it, because if we haven't actually enacted a different policy or anything, then it's. It's just say you come with your request and we vote on it. People that don't want to do it, they say no, people that do want to allow it, they say yes. But what, if we want to enact a policy, then we'd have to get together and. Get something that everybody at least can majoritively agree to.
And these are both repeat requests, I mean, people that have historically, um, especially with the Arts Council, and given that use. The Wings event happened last year, at the reduced rate, they did pay for the light and sound, so. I guess that's my feeling after this conversation is, I'm just gonna go with the historical decision.
Yeah. So, I. My feeling is, is if we're, even if we're gonna continue that, uh, the status quo for this year. To, that I want to give them a heads up to say, we're gonna do this this year, but just so you know, council is, may be changing policy. So next year, we, it may be different, so, is it, everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on? The Griswold, or on the? Applications, I know it's all still clear as mud. All right, so if there's nothing else with, uh, roundtable, we'll move on to item number four, discussion regarding proposed fiscal year twenty-five goals.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, at a previous, uh, council meeting, the city council listed their individual goals for the upcoming year. We're gonna bring them up on the screen here, they're in your packet. Michaela went ahead and put them into this spreadsheet for us, showing the number of votes for each goal. And then staff mentioned that we would take, make an attempt at synergizing what those goals were gonna be. I want to be clear, these are just draft goals for council. They're up for debate and discussion. Some of these we are carrying forward from years past. The first set falls under infrastructure and assets, identify, prioritize, and develop a funding plan to maintain the city's various infrastructure assets. This is something we've been discussing now for over a year. We are making headway on that as we speak. We'll have something to present to council, probably in the next month or two, on this one. The, that is a more broad and high level one, the next one was develop a plan for the future of the Trestle Trail Bridge. During your budget review sessions, uh, you set aside fifty thousand dollars to begin that process. Staff has applied for a state grant last year, unfortunately, we didn't receive it. But we then also applied for a congressional direct spending allocation this year through Senator Peter's office. The word is still out on that, but they've reached out to us for additional information, which in my eyes is a positive thing, because they didn't just write it off or reject it right away, they wanted to know more. So, we will keep you updated on that process. And then the third one was exploring, explore proposing a voter initiative for a dedicated millage to improve city streets. I did receive a comment from one council member who asked if we could reword that, to explore proposing, uh, funding scenarios to improve city streets. So. If there's. If you're okay with that proposed change, we can go ahead and include that proposed change, or if you'd like to discuss it, you can also discuss it.
I like the change, I think that kind of would encompass more than just that millage as an option.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, broader, it's probably better than just kind of pigeonholing ourselves into just the millage.
We can go ahead and we can update the, that language. Under economic development, uh, continue what we've done in the past, uh, we've wordsmithed some things here, continue working with private property owners on the development of downtown properties. Um, this includes, uh, one oh one Brady, and, uh, work we're making to, making to developing one oh one Brady for a hotel site. It also includes the various work we do with property owners downtown, uh, mostly we're developing the second stories of their buildings, but it shows that work and that effort. And then continue to attract new and commercial, new, new commercial and industrial development into the city. Is this not moving forward? There you go, sorry about that. So, those are the two things under economic development. To me, this is, uh, bread and butter, what cities should always be working on and focused on, you know, development, growing, that kind of stuff. The next set is community development. We are gonna continue increased focus on property maintenance. I would say, starting next month, we plan on giving you a monthly report during the study sessions. On the number of properties we've cited, the number of properties that have been cleaned up by the owner, the number of properties that we've had to abate. Parker's put together a pretty good email list for me, with, that's color coded. Green is, represents, you know, things they've cited, that they're going forward, red is they've hit a brick wall, and then black is we're gonna be abating these ones, so. They've been, it's been, it's been helpful for me, I've asked him to put a little more, you know, teeth into it, and then we'll be presenting that to council on a monthly basis, hopefully. Implement the city approved wayfinding plan, uh, last year you had the goal of developing a wayfinding plan. We received a state grant to help fund seventy-five percent of that project, that project's been completed. In the upcoming budget, uh, we are setting aside funds in the DDA budget, the Downtown Development Authority's budget, to install those downtown parking signs. We are working with, uh, a few sign companies to get some estimates, to do design build, to manufacture and install those signs. And so, this goal is just implementing it, it was one of the individual goals that council identified. Promote and increase the use of various city assets. Again, this is a continued goal, you know, the city owns the Regent Theater, the city spends money to keep the Regent Theater open downtown. We want to increase the use. Your conversation on the Griswold Auditorium, no more than ten minutes ago, that is a city asset, the city uses, the city, I mean, the city owns. The city pays to keep the doors open there, how can we get more people in there utilizing it? So we're looking at that. And then this goal, the final goal in this area is explore creating a single refuse hauler program for residential properties. This has been an idea that's floated around the city for the past couple years now. We feel we're making some pretty good headway with the downtown refuse program, and having that centered, and, you know. Taking care of, under one contract, and so, we'd like to start the oper, we'd like to start the process of exploring. What a single refuse and recycling hauler would be citywide. A lot of cities do this. One of the big goals is this, less truck traffic on your local streets. Garbage trucks are heavy trucks, heavy trucks damage streets, so if we can have fewer trucks on there, that's for the better. Less trucks with, uh, their emissions, their garbage trucks are usually dirty trucks, so, it kind of goes with your, uh, this year trying to be a more environmentally conscious community. So there's some opportunities there that we think, you know, can help, you know, support existing goals or, you know, potential goals you have for next year. Any questions on these goals? I've, I've got a final one, I apologize. We added a fourth one, administration. Uh, this is more of operations of the city, develop and implement a communications plan to improve community outreach. This is something that was in last year's, uh, set of goals, again, we're making some headway on it, but we feel it's one that needs to be carried forward. The discussion on how to, identify how to use, forgot to put the word use in there, how to use the marijuana. The discussion on how to identify how to use, forgot to put the word use in there, how to use the marijuana tax revenue will be spent in the city? Or how the marijuana tax revenue will be spent in the city? Yep. I should read what I write. So that was something council was mentioned before. We said we could put a byline in the budget saying it's gonna go to this project. You know, that marijuana revenue that we got this year, you know, really goes into our capital improvements to help make some of our projects successful. And then explore ways to engage area youth in the city's decision-making process. Um, I think Council Morgan was one that listed this, if I recall correctly. There's a handful of ways to do this. Some cities create a youth council. Where they appoint, you know, five kids from the community or seven kids or nine kids, whatever it is from the community. Usually the mayor or a council member becomes the ringleader, the organizer of that. They pick a couple of goals that they wanna focus on as a council. Some of them are appointed. In other cities, the way they work, they appoint them to advisory committees. You've gotta be a little careful there because you can't vote unless you're a registered elector. And that really applies to just the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals because they have authority decisions that they could make. So they'd be fine on public spaces, they'd be fine on DDA, but. The planning commission and ZBA that has, you know, authoritative decision-making powers, they couldn't be voting on those. You've had a chance to review this, you know, comprised amount of goals for a couple of days. One council member reached out to me with the proposed change. We're gonna make that proposed change. Is there any other questions or?
The only thing I was gonna mention real quickly is, um, under economic development. Looks like this is more like downtown properties for development. I didn't know how council felt. I mean, right now we have the identify promote areas in the city for, uh, development of well-planned housing. If we feel like we've accomplished that goal or if that's something that we wanna continue with going forward. I mean, for me, housing is still something that I feel, especially with, um, Joel's hard work on that committee. I don't know how everybody else feels about keeping that goal.
With the, uh, development, if, if it, if it precedes the development of the Girl Scout property and then the property up on Delano. We're almost to the point where we're only looking at infill housing.
We have some larger lots on Thomas Jackson Neighborhood behind, uh, LDS Church.
Yeah.
And we have a school property that.
Oh, good call. Good catch.
Right.
We're, we're gonna be busy in about two years.
Yeah. All right.
And if, yeah, if you wanna carry forward a goal, just say, carry forward, I mean.
To me, in my opinion, that's an important one to carry forward.
It is.
Um, especially, I mean, considering that even within Terra Homes, that subcommittee, I mean, we're still kinda working towards that, but. That was just my only suggestion for the goal.
That's good.
The only thing I do wanna just restate is that second goal under economic development. Continue to attract new commercial and industrial development citywide. When, when we wrote the first one, I, talking to this Michaela, I'm like, okay. Let's not just be tunnel vision on downtown. We get accused of that too much. We are talking citywide. So there, there are some opportunities there, but the housing one's an important one that we left out.
And you almost could just add that to it. Continue to attract new commercial, industrial, and housing development. And that would be a way to. Integrate it, but not have a separate one unless we want a separate one to be more of a focus.
Yeah.
Does the whole of the council care if we just had housing or?
Uh, I mean, it certainly is part of economic development as well as community development, so I think it fits well in there. Anybody else have any opinion?
I'm fine with it in that same line.
Are we, uh?
I.
Go ahead.
I have one little question. Maybe Tracy needs to answer this, but. It's a little bit on this line. It doesn't really pertain to goals, but. The identify how the marijuana tax revenue will be spent in the city under administration. So if council says we're gonna put aside fifty thousand dollars. How does council ever know that that's carried on, carried through? Not to say it wouldn't be or anything like that, but where would we see that happen?
There's a couple of ways that I can set it up to do that. I can set up like an actual separate account. Like cash account for that and restricting that amount. I can just literally have that set up in there. And then in reports show that that amount is restricted from the marijuana revenue. There's a couple of different ways that I can do it and set it up. And it might be something we could discuss at the finance. Committee meetings that we have to, you know, put together what you guys would want presented to council.
Oh, it would be, okay. All right. Thank you, Theresa.
Anything else on goals?
Yeah, and the goal of, um, the. Was it the attract new commercial and industrial development citywide? I g- I, I'm not quite sure how to address this, but what is the planning commission's role in that?
I would say we're. I guess in general it would be how we're. Uh, as we're addressing zoning ordinances and making it more appealing for developers to come in or. We're not really touching commercial stuff right now, but, uh, as, as we're trying to make it. Us more attractive to developers to come in and build homes and things like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at development projects coming up in the city and I'm going, I'm. I'm seeing developers come forward with proposals and I'm seeing residents respond with. Concerns about their neighborhood in a few instances here. And I'm thinking, okay, so I, developers coming forward, that seems like a good thing. Residents coming forward, that seems like a good thing. What are we doing in that scenario to help resolve these issues, to plan ahead so that. Residents are on board with what kinda development happens in their area. Developers know what's gonna pass for our city for proposals. Things like that, that pre-planning proactive. Before we find ourselves in these situations where people are reacting, I think could really help.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I think that falls more on our shoulders than planning commission.
You, you don't think the master plan should be identifying what development could happen in different parts of the city and?
The master plan, does?
Master plan just said different areas and that's what I was gonna say. Like.
Yeah.
We just identified all of our areas for, and what they were. In the master plan.
Yeah, I, I, I'm thinking like, uh, maybe a community engagement process that gets developed at the planning commission so it doesn't end up. Up here at our table with conflict kinda prebaked into it. You know, a place for, for this stuff to get worked out. A process, a policy.
But, you know, I think we don't, we don't want to start. I, I mean, I think it would be pre, uh, premature to have conversations with residents about a project that doesn't exist, like. I wouldn't wanna have a. An open forum with residents in the Jackson neighborhood until we thought there might be something moving forward because what would we even talk about? Because we wouldn't know what we were talking about at that point. Now that we have something happening in the Girl Scout property, I think we can have a conversation about. The pros and cons and what residents wanna see and don't wanna see.
Sure. I, I'm thinking if we identify areas like the Girl Scout property, like Pingree Park, like even the privately owned Delano. Or even the example of the one-on-one Brady. You know, as we identify those and we identify potential uses for them or the idea that we will be working on potential use. That proactive early outreach to those community members, those neighbors that might be impacted and interested. I think could really help with working through any conflicts or misunderstandings. Especially if you engage the neighbors in being part of a plan of what, what could work here.
Yeah. Makes sense.
I'm not much for it. It's. No matter what you do in any development, you're always gonna have people that don't want it developed or don't wanna change.
True.
You're always gonna have that issue. And you can preactively, yeah, like the ones that are identified already, but if there's something else that comes new along the way. You know, we're, we're open to always having people come in and address us and tell us they don't want it or. Hey, maybe we need to have a community meeting on this with whoever's planning to do development to. In essence, go over what they're planning to do because sometimes people don't even understand what's being planned. And then that's what causes the fear and causes the, well, they're gonna be putting up, you know. A strip mall or they're putting this here and it's not really even what's gonna be happening. And so that's where you get some of the issues. So like on this one, yeah, there's. But it's, you're always gonna have not in my backyard style, people that just aren't gonna want any development because they don't want it to change.
Yes, I understand that. Um, there is a problem with, if, if you're reactive in your processes, you can easily be accused of spot zoning. Oh, we don't like that project. We like that project. We're gonna create zoning rules for this project and not that project. Or, oh, we've got ourselves in trouble now, so we're gonna. Somehow prevent bureaucratically this project now that it's come up rather than well-established guidelines, reasoning. Rationale that we're using to assess these projects as they come forward.
Somewhat, but we also have our zoning. We don't have fully where every planned proposal has to come through planning and zoning. Unless it's needing a variance. If it fits within the defines of the zone and it fits within the defines of the setbacks and everything else. I know we may have some review of parking requirements and things like that for commercial property, but it's. Not everything comes up through, especially if it's like a new house or anything like that. It's. That's can be built there. So that's. You can get into that and some states and some areas do do that. They get very much intense in it and then that causes. Like in California with theirs, that can cause two, three, four, five years of delay of getting anything done. Because of all the extra red tape and everything that has to be done. So then nobody wants to develop anything. So you gotta be careful not to put too much into the bureaucracy, but I understand maybe community outreach, like. As somebody, you know, the Girl Scout property, I think is probably one that's gonna be coming up that we're probably gonna have to have a community meeting on now that we've got somebody with a proposal. And we got something to actually show is what we're thinking. Or what, you know, they're proposing. Um, I haven't even seen a proposal for that property that's coming up tonight here. What's planned there other than, he didn't say, you know, massive amount of buildings as far as I remember him talking about it, but.
And I haven't either, but what I'm offering is maybe instead of being so reactive, we could take some proactive measures to. Work on this stuff ahead of time, have clarity for everybody involved on what the process is, what the expectations are. You know, it, it's just a conflict that's come up like several times now and. You know, you read Alligan County News a couple of weeks ago and saw that park in downtown Sagatuck. And I, I don't wanna end up in that situation where something gets started, a lawsuit happens, we don't have our ducks in a row. Some judge decides, yeah, we didn't follow the, uh, process or we didn't have a well-defined process and then we're stuck. So again, for the interest of the neighborhoods, for the interest of developers, having that clarity on process. Again, what, what's our role, what's planning commission's role in those conflicts? Or in, um, avoiding those conflicts more importantly. Just food for thought, right? Like I'm just asking for thought on can we be more proactive rather than reactive on this stuff?
Yeah, I mean. I, I want folks to have input and to be able to give opinions and different points of view. My concern is I don't want us to have paralysis by analysis and never make. Any headway because everybody's. Has to have.
When you plan ahead and you've got a process and a procedure and policies and expectations that helps with that. Cause if you are reacting to conflict, then you can get paralysis. And if you find yourself in this conflict that escalates and gets out of your hand, then you, you really can't do anything. So if you take control of the situation, be proactive, have a plan in place. That, that to me is what well-planned development means, having a plan. If development comes to us and we don't have a plan already, then we're not talking about well-planned development.
Well, are you just talking city properties or all properties in general? Because if it's private property, I don't think I would have a plan for it. I think that would be kind of. Rude of the city to do to say, you know what, we don't really like what you have on your property currently and we're planning this instead in its place. Even though it's not a public land, it's not, you know, the public lands are one thing to say we have like a plan or an idea what we wanna do with it. The Girl Scout property was one of them. We've always had a plan that it would probably be. Housing.
I, I think.
Property, I don't think we even really saw it on the map.
I, I think you're, you're jumping right to the notion of trying to be restrictive. What, what I'm offering is that. There's likely to be in the whole spectrum of possible development in different spots of our city, things that. Could come up that we would go, okay, that's probably not right for that area, that neighborhood, that lot, whatever. Having some sort of. It, it can be pretty basic. That's what I think a master plan is and I'm.
Well, we have, we have a master plan and it was just updated. And we published it and it's available and there was lots of community availability to give input on it during its development.
And maybe that's something that we should explore in relation to this Pingree Park business, the Girl Scout property business. Possibly even revisit this one-on-one Brady and why were people so upset about that? Just looking at conflicts we've had around development, I'm going, man, maybe, maybe we could do better in our proactive approach here. But if, if you guys feel like status quo is where you wanna be on this, I'm not pushing to figure it out tonight. I'm, I'm offering a different perspective on this.
I'm just saying, you can be as proactive as you want in it. And the plans are there, the master plan has it in there. And then when it comes time that somebody actually wants to do the development, you're still gonna be right where you're at because not everybody agrees with the master plan, no matter what you do. So that's where you're.
When a lot of people will say, yes, we, we need to develop new housing, but don't do it in my backyard. And then we.
Even if it's on our master plan, that's where we're planning on housing.
Do we have in our master plan, here, here's Pingree Park, here's the neighborhood, here's what we're gonna allow inside of this zone?
There's zoning in there, but that was, like I said, that property was probably not even on anybody's map.
The answer to your question is yes. Our future land use plan, which is adopted by city council in twenty twenty-three for Pingree Park was RF residential flexible. City council had. A couple of meetings on the master plan. I assume as council members, you read the master plan and it talks about it. I would push back a little bit on you, Peter, that once it's in the master plan, people can still. Go to their government and say, hey, you say X, I'd rather do Y. There is a process to do Y. I mean, people have the right to appeal their government. So, but yeah, so that, that was addressed in that master plan, what to do with that, what I'm gonna call piece of land.
No, I'm not talking about zoning itself. Zoning is zoning. I'm talking about like, we plan on developing a new civic center and it's over top of where this neighborhood is. That's where I said that's on the router side. If it's like vacant land, I'm like, yeah, that's not a big deal. That's what I'm talking about is. Us going and say, well, we're just gonna put this plop here. The master plan with the zoning, that's all been gone through by zoning or by planning. I, I think I was on planning when they were first starting the process. It gets brought up and goes through multiple processes, multiple revisions. They give it up to us as a recommendation. We go through it. You know, so I'm, I'm fine with how that process works.
And then the other thing I, not talking about the conflicts that occur with all developments in all cities. But another way the planning commission continues to attract is when they rewrote the master plan, the airport area. They created a whole new zoning district called Airport. And when you read that description, it allows for commercial uses that support airport uses. So there's been talks for years, why don't we have a restaurant out there, especially on two twenty-two? I've, uh, had meetings with Enterprise Rent-A-Car, who's looking to locate a new place in central Alligan County. And I said, well, we just freed up this whole swath of land on empty twenty-two when the grass runway was decommissioned. So there's opportunities there. So the planning commission plays that role as Roger was mentioning. You know, they are the regulatory body when it comes to land use. Through both setting the vision through the master plan and then the zoning ordinance to, you know, the. Through both setting the vision through the master plan and then the zoning ordinance to, you know, the actual regulations. So they do play that role. Their meetings are open to the public. People do come in and sit down and listen sometimes. However, you know, they have a process that they go through in responding to developers, because developers. Property owners, they have the right to, you know, make appeals to their local government.
All right. Is there anything else on goals? Are we happy with where we're at? All right, we'll move down to item number five, discussion regarding the placement of an EV charging station in, in the Cutler Street parking lot.
All right, so City Council's been discussing this for a while. Several years ago, when we reconstructed the Cutler Street parking lot, which is across Crowbridge from us here. We put in conduit and had a plan to install an EV charging station for free. From a company in Michigan that received a bunch of money from the state to install these. I would say they. Overpromised and undelivered or underdelivered, similar to airlines where they oversell an airline and you get bumped somehow. Since that happened, we continued to look for ways to make this happen. We applied through Tesla's grant to get a free charger installed through that. We weren't successful. We applied to Consumers Energy for a rebate. That we were successful. So Consumers has set aside seven thousand five hundred dollars to install. EV charging station in the Cutler Street parking lot. As we were going through this process, we reached out to a handful of firms that install these. However, we've only had one that's been willing to meet with staff and talk about that process. And, you know, they're out of Vicksburg. It's a EV evolution. They have two options for us. One is a fifty amp. Charger and it includes a three-year operations and maintenance agreement, which I recommend we take. Because we've never operated an EV charging station, so it's good to have someone that knows what's going on at the beginning. For fifty amp, it's twenty-two thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. For an eighty amp, it's twenty-six thousand six seventy-five forty-four. And the difference between fifty amp and eighty amp isn't just thirty amps. It's, you know, they charge a little bit faster or a lot faster for the eighty amp. Compared to the fifty amp is what I was told. It all depends if we wanna install something that has things charged faster. The total cost would be fourteen thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-four cents for the fifty amp. Or nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-four cents for the eighty amp. And this would require budget adjustments, because we only received a seventy-five hundred dollar rebate.
This is just for one charger?
Yeah, one, uh, there'll be two charging ports on this. It's one machine, two ports. And this, we'd also have to pay for the meter that goes in there. And then this includes an app system, so they go up, there's a QR code, they scan the QR code with the Red E app on their phone. And you, you know, charge your, you know, you, you put in your credit card information and that money comes to the city.
So the one station would cover both.
Correct.
Charging plugs.
So if you look at the map above you, when we designed, or on the screens behind you or in front of you, when we designed that. Cutler Street parking lot, you can see where that red point is at the top right corner of that parking lot. That is near the charging station is, or the conduit and electric can hold is near that point. And then those two spaces with the red bar are those two spaces would become EV spaces. The DDA has discussed this often. They've encouraged council. Roger, you've been on for most recently, encourage council to look at ways to get one charging station downtown. I'm not gonna say staff is at their wits' end of studying this issue. But we have gone through this process now for three years of constantly on the back of our minds. How do we get something down here? And right now is the closest we've got to a solution.
Did we figure out? First, how do they pay? I mean, you said credit card, but do we know the dollar amount? Is it by the minute, by the hour?
Yeah, it's by the kilowatt. So like your electric, there's a, there's an electric meter on there that just spins when it's electric going through it and it's charged to your. Credit card.
So we really don't have a way to figure out. How much revenue there would be versus the expense of the machine.
I could probably dig into that, do a little research, reach out to people, but it's gonna come down to how often is it used? And I do not have a crystal ball or I have a magic eight ball, but I'm not sure I would trust that too much on how well this thing would be used. A little bit of the research I've done is the plug-in hybrids. Are gonna become popular the next couple of years instead of the all EVs. And they're designed either to be on gas or to be plugged in here as well. And they, they, they can see that being the next iteration of vehicle. And again, I am not an expert on this. I, I walk to work most of the time. I have a two thousand and six rest-of-out Ford Ranger that has no power windows, power mirrors or cruise control, so. I'm an anomaly when it comes to vehicles.
Yeah, cuz that would be my question, Teresa, as well as. I see there's a point oh five per kilowatt hour revenue share. So I'm assuming that's, are we only getting the point oh five or are they getting the point oh five? That was one of my questions.
I, I'll find that answer for you.
So in essence, I would need to know from this, like, one, what would the gross. Difference between the electric cost. And what we would be normally be able to charge for it and what we would be making on that per kilowatt hour. Then we see how fast the chargers are. We can take that, figure out through spreadsheets. And set up to figure out at different utilization rates, how much revenue it could generate. And then from that, at least have something to wrap our heads around, because otherwise, all I see is a money pit. Without having anything to wrap my head around as simple.
And you know, again, I'm gonna say we have, I mean, we sit in the budget meetings and we have no money to do what we have to do. I'm not saying we don't need this, but.
I would say it would have to at least make the, the maintenance agreement amount per year plus something beyond that. To cover the initial install and whether that is a three-year ROI, return on the investment, a four-year, that kinda gives me an idea. Where we're at on it. But we'd have to first kinda look at that usage, how much we're making per kilowatt hour. And then put that out, like, if this charger was utilized a hundred percent of the day, which is not likely, or fifty percent or thirty percent or twenty percent. It would give us an idea, is this ever even gonna make back the maintenance cost that we have to pay yearly? And then is it actually gonna make back the continual? Cause one, I, I view it as you have to actually make the cost of installing it. And then start actually having money there to do the updates of it in the future. To have that money to say, yeah, we're generating revenue with that. That's gonna be, of course, needed in the future. When the charging technology changes, because this isn't even like a level three or. A DC charger, which are the new ones that the Fed requires for their ones that they're doing along the highways. I was looking into this a lot. You talked about the eighty billion that's been set aside for the chargers. That's only along certain corridors. I looked into to see if we could do anything with it. No. So, and then there's some through Michigan, but we're not in the right area either. So that's what I'm looking at is either if a private entity wanted to install it, maintain it and do it all on their own and we're getting no revenue for it. Or very little just for the rental of the space. Or know where we're gonna be at in the long term on it.
I guess for me, if I, if I could mayor. I think everybody on council knows how I feel about the environment and, and I'm very much for. Charging stations. However, to quote Joel, from time to time, is the juice worth the squeeze at this point now? They've already put three years of effort into this. And if we're gonna be asking them now to do projections out for, you know, five, ten years. We're looking at a lot of staff time on something that. May or may not be utilized at all, to be honest. I mean, we, I know we have somebody that lives right downtown or they did have an electric vehicle. I don't know how many people would. Would be using it. So I appreciate all this, the staff time that has gone into this. It, it corresponds with one of our current goals. But at this point, I would almost just kind of say, no, at this point. Knowing that things are changing. I mean, I've also heard that they may stop producing electric vehicles, so.
Well, and there's policies that would have to be made, because if somebody goes to work and they have a low charge and they plug it in. I wouldn't want their car to be there for eight hours until they come back out to drive it home. You know, if it's a twenty-minute charge. We're horrible with enforcing rules.
Well, that parking lot's an overnight lot, so technically they could park there twenty-four seven if they wanted to. We don't have a two-hour parking lot or almost any spot that's two-hour in the city, because it's very hard to enforce. Um, I don't think it's necessarily not worth the squeeze. I think maybe if we go back to the company here, they may have some basic. So that we can go, give us some numbers on this, because our council needs to understand, how is this either A gonna make money or is it never gonna make money? Cause we just gotta at least be honest with it.
I mean, I'm happy to hear that information, because that is something, if we're not gonna. Even get back what we put into installing it, then that would answer my question pretty quickly. Uh, but I just don't want staff to have to put a ton more effort into this conversation. So I. I don't know what.
So just real quick, thanks for using one of my quotes. It is. I, I would, s- s- some more information I just wanna share with council. What I've learned. So the city of Holland, where I used to work, was, had one of the first ones in West Michigan installed in our city hall parking lot. And we had a couple of people who committed and bought the Chevy Volt. And they would park there and then go to the library and they're charged, because you can see through it's full, like blink screen. And so it became common practice. That people would just unplug their car and then plug it into theirs. So in a way, it does self-regulate a little bit. This would be different, because the city was free through the Holland Board of Public Works, so people didn't have to swipe a card. This is, you're doing the QR code, so I'm not sure exactly how that works. But there is some self-regulation I can ask. I know a couple of people that have electric, they have Teslas that live in the community. I can just ask them how they approach that, because that is a concern for mine as well. The DDA, again, very supportive of this. I mean, to the point where they're like, hey, use some of our fund balance. To pay for this. I was like, well, your fund balance is already spoken for for construction projects, not for this to come up. They view this as in a way for tourism and economic development. Because people use these charging stations as maps to go somewhere. And so it puts Alligan on a little bit of a map as a destination with one of these things. Because as, as Mayor Pro Tim Hands mentioned, the ones available through the feds and the state all seem to be on the freeways. Or the high-capacity trunk lines we have that crisscross the state. Alligan, I looked into, that, that was part of my frustration. It's just like, man, we just can't win on this one. We've won on a lot of state programs and funding. But this one, we aren't winning on. I did email the company, as you were talking, Peter, I typed it up in the email. I just hit send. Clearly, they would like to make the sale to us, so they're willing to give us answers. And that's, that, that's easy diving for staff to just send an email and ask questions. Um, what I'm hearing from council, at least the ones that spoke so far. Was, let's make sure we're not losing money on this, because we can't predict future use. I would offer, in a way, this is a little bit of a gamble on that public investment. And it's, it's a similar public investment, in my opinion, to the splash pad we made. Not everybody has kids that wanna go down to that splash pad and pay, and play in the water. And I hear from a certain segment of town that says, why did the city ever do it? I'm like, cuz it's great. Kids are splashing and having fun on hot days. Why wouldn't the city do it? There's a segment of the population that would see this charger and say, oh, this is good. We're meeting the need of the community. But you wanna be careful on, you know, that we're not overextending ourselves too far. And right now, getting that seventy-five hundred dollar. Rebate from consumers. We get it this year. And if we don't use it, I, I struggle that they would come back with another opportunity if we apply again. Cause they're saying, well, we already had one available and you didn't pull the trigger to get this done. So just keep that in mind, that right now, this is where we are and, you know.
We did pull the trigger, it's just they failed to produce on their contract.
Correct. Or Haga Automotive did. They, they failed to produce. So. I will get those answers for you. And right now, you know, the total cost for the eighty amp is twenty-six thousand. You know, I think a fifty amp would be just as fine, in my own opinion. You know, and you take that seventy-five hundred dollar. Rebate, your rough math in my head is you're probably paying seventy-five cents on a dollar for this project. So. I will do that research and I'll update council in an email. And if it looks like I feel this is something council could vote yes on. By talking to individual council members, I'll put it on your next packet, your next meeting date. If that's okay with you. Any other council members wanna chime in?
Yeah, I, I, sorry. I'm struggling with it. I am also a huge proponent of. Electric vehicles and I think having a charging station here is good, cuz I think it brings in people. But it also just is another sign that Alligan is. Forward-thinking and a part of that, but. I think, you know, we have almost fifteen thousand dollars that the, the fifty amp would cost that could go toward the. Wayfinding project or, ah, I just. That's frustrating and I, I hate to be investing in a blacksmith shop right before Henry Ford opens his. His auto plant. So I mean, if, I don't know if, I, I don't know if the high electric, well, I guess if they're charging hybrids, they'll still need a charging station, but. I don't know, I just, uh, there's a lot of question marks. So maybe getting some answers will, will be helpful.
And, and over, I mean, you have my email, you have my phone number. I am available before, during, after work, even on the weekends. So feel free to email me, reach out your questions. Jeff from this EZ Evolution or whatever the name of the company was, very friendly. I mean, always answered my emails and phone calls right away, so he, it won't be a problem asking multiple rounds of questions. So if stuff pops up in your brain. Feel free to send it. Copy Parker on it too, so he can remind me, cuz sometimes emails get lost. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else on that, we'll move to item number six, discussion regarding the creation of two city council subcommittees.
All right, um, so we discussed this during your budget sessions. I feel this is an opportunity to allow council a little more. Opportunities to meet with senior staff. And see how the sausage is made, maybe have more blunt discussions with count, with the city staff. And so what we're recommending is that council consider creating two city council subcommittees. The Finance and Personnel Committee would review financial policies, investments, human resources. This is the day-to-day operations, kinda how the city operates. And then the Budget and Capital Improvement Committee would overview the development of the budget, significant. Budget adjustments, not the one thousand or two thousand dollar ones, but the big ones, like new programs or new projects. And then review capital improvements as well. Both of these committees would meet as needed. You would be a sounding board for senior staff. Tracy Stoll, the finance director, and myself. Will be the main staff members and then we'll bring in the other department heads as needed. And then, as I recommended, the makeup of the committee, in my opinion, should be. You know, the council members minus the mayor, so three on one and then three on the other. And since the mayor already serves on the DDA and the planning commission. I think this would be a fair makeup or composition. Questions? This report was in your packet. Are we missing anything? We've discussed this. We discussed it for a hot minute during the budget sessions last week or two weeks ago. We've discussed this, we discussed it for a hot minute during the budget sessions last week or two weeks ago.
We generally positive, negative? Where are we at?
I think it could be all right. Just a matter of how are we setting this up? Like, is it going through an ordinance? Are we gonna actually enact it through ordinance to establish this subcommittee? And then the makeup of said subcommittee and how that gets decided every year or every two years or every four years as council rea- is reelected? Or is this just kind of a, similar to all the other subcommittees choose which one you want to be on and?
Ad hoc, kinda.
Are we gonna ad hoc it?
Yeah. So, Michaela, correct me if I'm wrong. Our council rules and procedures is a, is that an ordinance or is that a policy?
Initially, it was established through an ordinance.
Okay, so this is something where we could amend the rules, council rules and procedures? I know the ethics ordinance is an ordinance that you all sign each year to behave ethically. Um, I believe that you're right. I think the council rules, we, we, we could probably just amend that ordinance and include, you know, these two committees in that ordinance.
I was just thinking more of the composition and how it gets done, like as far as, one, we can't even really technically tie future councils' hands on how they want to address it later, but they could just change the ordinance. But just thinking like, what style or what would we want it set up as? Is that these committees more a long-term committee instead of like, we used to change yearly, but we decided that's really not a great idea? We went to kind of like bi-yearly, like at least be on the committee two years before switching? Because it just makes for chaos every year that somebody new has to get brought up to speed. Or is it a rotation, leave two, switch one every year, one switches from one to the other? I'm just, you know, I, I don't want to tie any future councils' hands, but it's just kind of figure out how this would operate and what would be a good idea for staff to make it useful for you to have this subcommittee.
Yeah, so, you know, they're just opinions. I, I would make it very simple. You just establish these two committees in the ordinance and that the city, that the mayor appoints the membership of each committee after the election each year when the mayor is chosen, is the way I would run with that if I was in your shoes. That way you're not really tying hands to, you know, future councils, you know, to the terms or anything like that. Um, and also, to majority of council, I think this, this is a dumb idea. You're allowed to say, hey, Joel, this is a dumb idea. We don't want to do this.
I don't think it's a dumb idea. I think it's a good idea, um, to provide. And it's not that staff is not transparent at all because I, I feel like you all are very transparent. You're always available for any questions that we have. But just to have a little bit more involvement with some of that and then being able to come back and report to full council on what the committee had discussed. So I think it's a good idea. And I know Teresa had brought up like HR staff and exit interviews and things like that. And it's just, just an opportunity for us to be a little bit more involved.
Just to correct myself real quick, I did look into it and the rules of procedure can be amended through a resolution. So it doesn't have to go through the whole ordinance process.
But I do like the idea of having it be for longer than one year.
I'm good.
So whether it's.
I think it's a good idea myself too, so.
I'm, I'm fine with it. So we could look at this and establish it, kind of figure out how it all, how we want it all to operate. Are these gonna do any reports back to council? Because that's the only concern I really had was like, if the subcommittee is working with you guys on budget, then all of a sudden you come out with a budget and we all feel like we get broadsided because those three members were talking about it and we don't have any, where are you guys at on this? I just don't want that to kind of happen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure our pr- budget processes and stuff like that won't change.
Yeah, yeah, you're still have the budget meetings, but, yeah, but to answer your question directly, Peter, yeah, it's my intent that the subcommittee, when they meet, would report at the next council meeting what they discussed.
That's all I want. It's just, because otherwise you get broadsided.
Kind of similar to the other committees.
Don't want, like, we've been discussing this for six months and here's what we think we should do. And it's like, wish you came to us like a month ago when we, the other council members might have said, no, this isn't a great idea. So that's my only.
I don't think that happens.
Any more input on this? All right, so, uh, start thinking about which, uh, which of these you'd want to serve on. All right. Item number seven, review of March revenue and expenditure report. Tracy, is that you? Anything? Nope, nothing?
Well, just revenues and expenditures for March.
All right. Any, uh, any questions or? Anything on this? All right. There's nothing, uh, on that. We'll move down to review of council agenda. We have, uh, an addition. Do you want to talk about that?
Uh, sure. Um, I received a phone call this afternoon, um, from Sheriff Baker's office. And they are going to be present at tonight's regular meeting and requested that we amend the agenda to allow a slot for, uh, Sheriff Baker to present kind of a formal report to council. Um, and then to kind of talk about, um, his run for reelection this fall and all of that. Um, so that is going to be put under, uh, section six, so that would be six B. And then there will need to be a motion as well to excuse Councilmember Morgan.
Thank you. All right, that's, I'm making myself notes here.
Michaela, do you have a specific verbiage you want, like, for that title? Just presentation by Sheriff Baker or?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, if that's okay with council.
Yeah, it works. All right. All right. If there's nothing else on the agenda, we'll adjourn the meeting at six forty-four and we will reconvene for the regular council session at seven o'clock. Thank you for everyone who spoke.
It is seven o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Kelly, can we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Redding.
Here.
Councilmember Zeter.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan. Councilmember Andres.
Here.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hands.
Present.
And Mayor Byrd.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to excuse?
Motion to excuse, Bill.
Thank you.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. If you would, all please rise with us and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four, we have approval of agenda. We have one addition to this agenda adding that in, having Sheriff Baker present. So if I can get a motion with that amendment?
I will make a motion to amend tonight's agenda adding agenda item six B, which will be a presentation to council from Sheriff Baker.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Item number five, approval of minutes. Item five A, approval of the study session meeting minutes from April eighth, twenty twenty four council meeting. Any changes? If not, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
I'll abstain. I was absent.
Item five B, approval of the regular meeting minutes from April eighth, twenty twenty four council meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Once again, I will abstain. I was absent.
Item five C, approval of the budget meeting minutes from April tenth, twenty twenty four council meeting.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. And item five D, approval of the budget meeting minutes from April eleventh, twenty twenty four council meeting.
Motion to approve. I make a motion to approve as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item number six, special presentations in recognition by mayor or city council. Item six A, recitation of the one hundredth anniversary of the Rotary Club proclamation. Is there any lead into this?
Just that we have several members from the Alleghan Rotary here, so if you just want to raise your hand so council can see all the members that showed up.
Thank you for being here. So I will make this proclamation. Whereas Rotary International is a worldwide service organization founded in Chicago in nineteen oh five, currently consisting of over forty-six thousand clubs and one point four million professional and business leader, leader members around the world. And whereas the Rotary motto, service above self, inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas the Alleghan Rotary Club has a one hundred year history of community service over the years, and at one point or another has been successful in organizing many community events for Alleghan, for the Alleghan community. Whereas these events have included the annual chicken barbecue, Good Times at the gazebo, annual Christmas programs, Yogurt Wagon, Alleghan County Fair Car Raffle, Rose, Red Rose Award Banquet, Fly In Alleghan Airport sponsoring post-prom, Polio Plus International Eradication Program, Elementary School Dictionary Distribution, Junior Rotarian Program, support of the Foreign Student Exchange, and Annual Youth College Scholarship Program, lawn care and snow removal at Wings of Hope Home, supplied water purification kits overseas, supported building of Hanson Park and Meditation Walk, and supported the refurbishing of the old Regent Theater. Now, therefore, I, Roger Byrd, mayor of the City of Alleghan, call upon all citizens of Alleghan to recognize and celebrate the one hundredth anniversary of the Alleghan Rotary Club and congratulate our Rotarians for their, their service above self and centennial anniversary event planned at the Silo on Friday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M, dated this twenty-second day of April, twenty twenty-four. Well done, all of you. Thank you. That was a lot of words. Now, item eleven B, Sheriff Baker.
Six B.
Sorry, what did I say? Did I say eleven? Where'd I get eleven from? Six B.
Thank you. Appreciate a little bit of your time tonight. For those that may not know me, my name is Frank Baker. I'm the sheriff of Alleghan County. And as a sheriff, we periodically have to run for reelection every four years. And this is one of those elections that I'll be running for, and I have decided to seek a third term as your sheriff. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I've been in law enforcement at the sheriff's office for thirty-four years. The last will be eight at the end of this year as the elected sheriff here in Alleghan County. And one of the things I think is important when you go to the polls in August, because I do have a primary opponent, is to think about what qualities do you want to see in your sheriff. Number one, I think, is experience. This isn't the kind of job you can just walk into with no real history or knowledge of how this position operates. And I, like I say, I have been at the sheriff's office thirty-four years, so I have a long history in law enforcement. So that experience, I think, is important, that leadership, that ability to actually run the operation there at the sheriff's office, which is a large one. The other thing I think you should want to look for is someone who has community involvement. I've had a long history of community involvement, a lot of it right here in the Alleghan City. I've been a board member of Safe Harbor Children's Advocacy Center back when they were downstairs here in this building. And that's going on twenty years now that I've been a board member of Safe Harbor. And I got very affiliated with them as my time as a detective investigating serious crimes against children. And I saw the importance of having an advocacy group that looks out for children. So I've been on that board of directors for a lot of years. I'm also a board member of the Hospital Foundation, been there since about twenty sixteen, maybe twenty fifteen. I'm also a board member of the Outlook Academy out in, dealing with children and kids who have had some struggles in public schools. And knowing that it's important for them to get an education, I decided that I thought it was important that I, that I serve on that board as well. I'm also a prior board member to Sylvia's Place Domestic Violence Shelter. And I'm also on the Legal Assistance Center Board of Directors. I've been on there since about twenty fifteen as well. So I know the importance that, that it is for, for people to seek help when they have to deal with this, with this, I'm gonna call it the system. I'm so used to saying the criminal justice system, but when someone's in the criminal justice system, we all know they get an attorney to represent them if they cannot afford one. But in the civil side, you're not entitled to that. So the Legal Assistance Center is nice because it does provide them with some guidance. They don't give, they don't actually provide an attorney, but they provide some guidance. Because what happens oftentimes is somebody comes into the, to the courthouse and they may be filled out papers for a PPO or whatever, whatever the case may be, and they get to the clerk's office and they find out, well, maybe they filled them out wrong. So they have to start over again. And they hit, their time on the docket has now been given to someone else, so they're, they're kind of stuck in a loop. So I, I saw the importance of that, also for our deputies. You know, oftentimes we're dealing with situations at two in the morning when there's not a lot of resources available to people. And we want to help, but deputies aren't attorneys. We can't give legal advice. But now we have an opportunity to direct them somewhere where they can get the resources and the help they need. So we can feel that in the morning they'll have someone to help them get that PPO they might need or whatever the case may be. But I also feel education's important that you'd want to have in your sheriff. I'm proud to say that I'm a graduate of Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command. In law enforcement, we all began at the police academy. Some of us went to college prior to that and may have a degree more than likely in criminal justice. But when we get into positions such as the sheriff, these are jobs that we'd never intended to do in our lives. Because when we started off, we all wanted to do what every young law enforcement officer does. They want to work nights. They want to help their community, do good things, take people to jail. And eventually we find out we're at the point in their career where I am, and you decide, you know what, someone talked me into running for sheriff. Well, now I got to run this as a business. So at the sheriff's office, we got well over a hundred employees. We have a budget that is in the, over ten million dollars. I think we're about sixteen now. And so having gone to the Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command, they teach you how to, to do a budget like that, how to manage a budget like that, how to deal with human resource issues. Because as a police officer, that's something we've never done in our careers, but now we have to. So it's that business side of, of operating an organization that size. So I was proud to be able to be a graduate of that program as well. But more importantly, I think that you just want someone that you can trust, someone that you can, that you respect and that you think will do a good job. And I hope that you've felt that way with the service that I've provided as your sheriff over the years. And if so, I would ask that you support me and vote for me on August sixth in the primary. And I'll be glad to answer any questions anyone may have.
Do you have an opponent in the primary?
Yes, I do. So yeah, the first time I had a third party candidate, so I didn't have a primary. I went right for the general election and then nobody ran against me my second term. So, but I do have a primary opponent this time.
Great.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate your time tonight.
Appreciate it. Item number seven, first reading of ordinances and scheduling of public hearings. Seven A, first reading of ordinance five twenty to amend section four oh two point zero one table of uses and section seventeen oh seven point three three of the City of Alleghan zoning ordinance to allow temporary marijuana events and schedule a public hearing and second reading of the ordinance five twenty for the May sixth, twenty twenty four special council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Byrd. Very quickly, the first thing you see on the screens in front of you is the table uses that's in our zoning ordinance. As you'll see at the very bottom, the temporary marijuana events is listed and it is required to get a special use permit when they're on PGL, Public Governmental Lands District. The reason the planning commission, through recommendation from our zoning administrator Lori Castillo at PCI and staff here at City Hall, recommended the PGL is as you look into the actual zoning ordinance and the zoning map, the location that this will occur on is on private land that's fifty acres or larger in size. And there's only one private land in there that qualifies for that, and that's the Alleghan County Fairgrounds. And the Alleghan County Fairgrounds area is zone PGL. So that's why that is located there. The requirements for the zoning ordinance is that they shall be permitted only on privately owned park parcels over fifty acres in size. All consumption areas must be located the larger distance of a hundred feet from the nearest non-associated property line or a hundred feet from the nearest non-associated dwelling unit. So you can't be right up along the fence line at the Alleghan County Fairgrounds. The hours of operation are limited to eight A M, from, from eight A M to eleven P M. That's similar to what we have limitations on other items, other events that occur in the city. Overnight storage of any marijuana product or materials or waste material shall be prohibited at the site unless within a locked building or secured dumpster. This is similar regulations we have for our provision centers. And then the last item you see there is consumption and sales areas must be properly screened so as not to be visible from the right of way or adjoining parcels. This is a first reading. The planning commission held the public hearing on it at their April fifteenth meeting, so last Monday. One person spoke at that meeting, and that was Sari Miller, the executive director for the Alleghan County Fairgrounds. During her presentation, she made it known to the planning commission that they've signed this agreement with this company already, not knowing that there is regulations in state law that regulates marijuana events. So once that was brought to our attention, we moved it forward. Also, as noted in the city council report, this was going to come to their April, their March meeting. However, they were not, they didn't have a quorum at that time. Therefore, it got pushed back to their April meeting. And it puts them in a little bit of a time crunch with state requirements. The state has to receive the application within ninety days of their event. So that's why the mayor has requested a special meeting or called for a special meeting on May sixth. And that's when you will be doing your second reading of this, and that's when you'll also be reviewing their special use permit at that time as well. Any questions for staff regarding this zoning ordinance?
Joel, just looking at the report, it says that they need to have city approvals by May ninth because the application is required by May sixth.
So they need to have all city approvals by May ninth. This is required since that is a typo. I apologize.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
Good catch.
Do you know the date that they need?
May ninth.
So they need it by?
Yeah, they need, they need it by May ninth.
Okay.
That's ninety days out from the event.
Few questions. I see it says parcels over fifty acres. Now, the fairgrounds is actually three or four parcels. Only one of those is over fifty acres. At least going by the GIS maps.
Number two, ordinances, don't they have a certain amount of time before they go into effect? So how could we do a final reading approval and then hear a permit application?
So the special use permit application will have a condition on it that if approved by city council.
Well, I'm saying if during the second reading, we approve the new ordinance, normally ordinances take
Correct.
Certain amount of time before they come into effect, so how can we get an application for something that's not in effect yet?
So what we will do is we can get applications for things that aren't in effect. The city can review them, and the condition of approval on that is that the ordinance goes into effect. That's a legal process on approving special use permits.
Only last thing is, this is quite a change from what planning had originally proposed in our original marijuana ordinances. They specifically left this out on purpose.
When when we originally were doing this ordinance and we were reviewing how we wanted to word this, we knew, as we've done with other ordinances, that we could set the ordinance the way we did initially with the idea that as we got more comfortable, as we knew how things were playing out, we could change the ordinance. We could expand it, but we wanted to make sure we were a little more restrictive at the beginning. So we we had the understanding that there may come a time where we would expand the ordinance, and that's kind of what's happening now. Because and I think we're doing it in a way that's still very restrictive, the way we've written it is there's only one place in the city.
That's actually something that I don't like either. I don't like that you have literally an ordinance that's made for one party.
Well, it's a pretty major party in town.
Yeah, but it's still, it's made for one party. And that's not typically how I like ordinances to go, that we're making a special ordinance for one party. Just doesn't seem right to do that. Now, I remember because I was on planning at the time, we're going through the marijuana ordinances, we, wasn't just that we wanted to expand over time, it was we purposely left it out when we were looking at that possibility. And then later, I don't know, because the composition of planning changes over time, so I'm just saying it seems like they've gotten a change that they're okay with this. Some of the things that were brought up before in planning when we were looking at this was inebriated driving. How is that being addressed for public consumption? That's where most of us were okay, it's like, yeah, there was no public consumption, it was, you buy it, you go home. We don't have to worry about the inebriated driving as much, but when you literally have an event or a hookah lounge or things like that, that is something that comes into my concern.
The cities, oh, go ahead.
I just got a little cue from the back that they can't hear very well, so.
We have heard back from other cities who have hosted these events and the overwhelming sentiment has been that it has not caused any any of those types of issues. There haven't been any any negative reports that I've heard at all. You can correct me if I'm wrong on that, staff.
I just had a quick question, too. This is far enough away from the school to fall under our ordinance currently, okay. And just in response to that, I I know that the CRA does have to have individuals at the events. So that's the Cannabis Regulatory Agency, does need individuals at each of those, yes, events. And just to to go with what you're mentioning, Peter, with inebriated drivers, I guess the way that I'm looking at this is that it's similar to the Beer Festival that would be held in the same location where there's public consumption and then people are leaving that location.
What is the distance requirement for this ordinance from a school?
There is no distance requirement, so we have a separation from schools for provision for provisioning centers and micro businesses only. If I'm not mistaken, we don't have a, we do not have one for manufacturers, processors.
I'm sorry.
Don't go for it.
What we questioned in Planning Committee was with the property lines being together, but they're not going to be assuming them up on the hill, it's going to be down below at the industrial center there.
And this event specifically will not be occurring when schools are in session, it's during the summer. So there won't be kids on on school rooms.
But our zoning would allow for it here. We don't have anything in here to say the school has to be out of session.
Just for our own peace of mind.
It was the question of the properties boarding up together, is what it was.
Yeah, that's why I was like, they're definitely within a thousand feet. I knew that might just go to Dawson, so it's like, yeah.
So just to remind council, this is a first reading. Your second reading, if you approve the first reading this evening, would be for May sixth. I do not believe there's anyone in the audience from the Allegan County Fairgrounds, but they were present at the Planning Commission public hearing. In regards to the language, privately owned parcels over fifty acres in size, I believe our intent with that was parcels that are contiguous under the same ownership. We have a handful of parcels that are under the same ownership that are, you know, multiple parcels create, you know, add up to one property. So that was that was the intent of writing that. Our parking lots used to be like that, our downtown riverfront park, I think, was like twenty-three parcels up to about four years ago when we combined them all into one parcel because it just made sense for us. So that that's the intent, and that's how the zoning administrator is defining that. If you want us to be clearer on that language, that's something we can be clearer on and come back for the second reading with clearer language on that. You're allowed to amend the language between the first reading and the second reading.
Would that be helpful? Could be helpful, but it's, I'm still not in really support of this. Just just my feeling on it that I've never was really in support of hookah lounges or public events, so.
Any anything else on this?
Does this follow our procedure where we are asking for public comment and then we'll have further discussion? Are we not?
We're just sitting in the public hearing this evening for May sixth, so that would be where the public hearing would be held on May sixth.
Okay. Well, I'll offer that, first of all, I want to acknowledge that I think these events are coming to Allegan, whether we're ready or not at some point in the future. You know, I also want to acknowledge that the fairgrounds does seem like a reasonable venue for this to happen. And I, you know, the ordinance is restrictive enough that it seems likely it's only the fairgrounds. I also want to acknowledge that even though there's more stores in the city than what I think the community understood there would be when the original ordinance was passed, on the whole, I don't know that that's really caused significant issues for folks in the community. So there's a lot of things here that seem very reasonable to me. Ultimately, I I'm gonna vote no on this just because I don't feel like I'm in a position where I want to push the community on this, and I don't know that I'm seeing the community be ready for this. It's just my gut feeling at this time. It's not a no forever, because like I said, I think these events are going to be more and more normalized and better organized, and it may be there already. It's a tough thing to measure community sentiment. We might know more at the public hearing, but I I'm not going to be available May sixth, so I won't be able to be there. But for right now, this year, I I'm a no on this tonight. Not saying I'm a no for the future, not saying I think this is a terrible idea, but just I'm a no right now.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on May sixth, twenty twenty-four, regarding ordinance five twenty.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed nay?
Nay.
So that's a three-three tie, the motion fails, there will not be a public hearing or a second reading on May sixth.
All right, moving on to item seven B. Do we need, do we need to do item seven B?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, so please let me go through it.
All right, so first reading of ordinance five twenty-one to amend chapter thirty-one marijuana of the city code to provide a regulatory authorization process for temporary marijuana events and schedule a public hearing and a second reading of ordinance five twenty-one for May sixth, twenty twenty-four special council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Byrd. So this ordinance is related to the previous one that just failed in vote. However, it is an independent ordinance. What this establishes is how the city would go about processing the applications and approving applications for temporary marijuana events. Working with the city attorney, it follows the same process for all the other marijuana businesses that the city council currently allows, which includes provisional centers, of which I believe we have four of them, micro businesses, we don't have any of those, processing center plants, we have one of those that have been approved in the city, and then growers, and we have one of those as well. This would just, you know, be approved through the clerk, the clerk may require a bond or other certi that will save the city, you know, harmless from any claim. That's typical for other events we used to approve, you know, the city's approving this event, but you aren't, you know, if you have to indemnify us from your event and activity that happens there. And so, again, this is an independent ordinance. I would offer if city council down the road would want to approve temporary marijuana events in the future, you can move ahead with this ordinance, but the zoning ordinance is also needed. So this doesn't allow those to occur, it just creates a pathway for the city to approve them if the zoning ever allows them.
Quick question, Joel?
Yes.
If we're gonna be setting a special meeting for this, it would not need to be on May sixth at that point, is that correct? So we could schedule the public hearing for
Your, yeah.
The regular council meeting on?
Regular council meeting, yeah.
Any other discussion on this?
I make a motion to schedule a public hearing on ordinance five twenty-one for May thirteenth.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Item seven C, schedule a public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget for May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Assuming this is asking us to do that.
Yeah, I can handle this one. As part of your budget schedule, you have to have a public hearing prior to adopting the budget, and the budget needs to be adopted before the end of May. So your public hearing is always, you know, in the middle of May. Council, you have had multiple strategic planning sessions this year, you've had multiple budget sessions reviewing the numbers. You've had the final numbers now in front of you for about a week and a half. You've made some changes to those numbers already. So we're at a time now when we are ready to schedule the public hearing for May thirteenth to receive comment. Any comments received at the May thirteenth meeting, we can take into consideration, and then we'll bring the budget back for your final adoption at your last meeting in May. You are just scheduling the public hearing this evening.
Questions, discussion? Now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to schedule the public hearing for May thirteen.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number eight, public hearings and adoption of ordinance. Item eight A, second reading, public hearing and adoption of ordinance five nineteen to repeal chapter sixteen nuisances and amend chapter seventeen offenses, chapter twenty-five, street sidewalks and other public spaces, chapter twenty-eight, traffic and motor vehicles, and chapter twenty-nine, utilities of the city code.
Thank you, Mayor Byrd, this is the must have heard an echo, I apologize. This is the third meeting that city council has reviewed the proposed amendments to these chapters. Just to give you a brief reminder, chapter sixteen nuisances, most of those have been relocated to chapter seven, it's our Building and Property Maintenance Code now. Chapter seventeen, talked about offenses. Chapter twenty-five, streets and sidewalks, regulated the operations on the streets and sidewalks. Chapter twenty-eight, traffic and motor vehicles, identified parking, et cetera, on our streets and our traffic. And then twenty-nine, talked about theft of utilities. We review these in detail at a study session and again at your previous meeting when you scheduled a public hearing for this evening. So tonight is the night when you hold the public hearing.
All right, so we'll yeah, so we will open our public hearing at seven thirty-one. Anyone has any questions, comments about this, the second reading for the changes in these ordinances? You can come up to the podium. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-two. Discussion from council? None, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance five nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item eight B, public hearing and adoption of resolution twenty-four dot one one for final confirmation of the twenty twenty-four special assessment role. Joel?
I will actually take.
All right.
So this is the special assessment role for the twenty twenty-four tax year. Council has reviewed this a handful of times already. I did want to note that you have a copy in front of you with some highlights. We did have one invoice that was paid, and then we had an error on there where the invoice number for a property that's listed three times on there had the same invoice number listed, so we did go ahead and correct that. And then also, I did not highlight it on your copy, but the total has been adjusted to reflect that one invoice being paid. So all that we need council to do tonight is adopt the resolution, hold a public hearing for it, of course. And then if the resolution is adopted, then I will go ahead and pass that along to our assessor.
Great, thank you, Michaela. So I will open the public hearing at seven thirty-four for anyone, for anyone who has opinions, thoughts on this matter. If you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Peter Ann Kobyak the second, thirty-two twenty Spring Hill Drive, Allegan, Michigan.
Thank you.
I'm included on this notice of public hearing for the first and the two, second item on that. The late, these are both rental houses. I was first informed that the city had mowed the law, the Park Avenue by way of a letter or a bill from the city. The invoice was dated September, let's see here, no, August third, claiming that there was mowing done on this property on June thirtieth. So this is the first that I knew that any mowing had been done on this property. It was a rental, there was tenants in there. They didn't contact me to notify me that there's a problem with your property, that your tenant isn't taking care of it. The other one, and shortly after that, the tenant moved out in June. So you can see there were no moved out in June, so you can see there were no further bills because I had people hired to mow that property. I never observed in anything that was done as far as mowing. The second one, and I don't know if this is what she's referring to as a property being deleted, my tenant at five seventy-eight Ely Street informed me today that she had paid this bill, and that, so if that was the case, it shouldn't be on this list here. It used to be when a problem with mowing on one of my properties was occurred, that the city police officer would either notify me or my son, and he would notify me. Neither of those happened here. And if there was a bill sent, I'd like to see it where it was sent to me and not to this rental address, because if it was sent to the rental address, I never became aware of it. It wasn't something I could correct. I think the city clerk, I don't know, I asked her to put this bill I submitted today on, on this list. You're going to have a public hearing. I own a piece of property at two thirty Monroe Street. The city owns the lot next door to it. The city never cuts it. So I have a lawn mowing service that does my three parcels right there, and I asked him to do this parcel because the city never cuts it. So I've submitted a bill to the city for about, I'd say about fifteen times that we covered, cut this lot for the city last year. I didn't give you any notice, just like I never got any notice that your lot isn't being cut. So I think that there should be a procedure set up so that you don't find out when you sent me this notice in the mail that I owed for five seventy-eight Ely Street. Nothing prior to that. No notice that my lawn wasn't being cut, no notice that a bill being sent to me, nothing, until I get the notice of the public hearing in the mail saying that this is going to be added apparently to my taxes, or something, I mean, that comes in out of the dark. I don't think that's a fair way to operate. I mean, if there's a problem, and there's numerous mowings on here, and I understand that that can happen, but it's something that, if it's a rental property, it should be obvious that the city, when it came to sending the invoice, they didn't send it to the rental property. They sent it personally to me. If there was going to be a problem with it not mowing, being mowed, they, I think there should be a procedure to notify the owner, not who's living there, because we have lots of rentals in this town. There's a lot of businesses own that, own properties. I just don't think it's fair to send you a bill, this one here, a month and a half later, saying that they cut your property. I don't know that they cut it. I never saw any evidence of it being cut. I don't know if they're, when they mow, that the only thing they do is cut between the curb and the sidewalk. This particular property at one forty-five Park Street has got a, a flowing well right there, and I'm sure there wasn't anything cut around that. It's something that you would have needed special equipment for. And so I think that this way of, of doing this is not fair at all, and there should be a different procedure made up. And as I said, I think that if you're going to adopt this, at this public hearing and assess these, I'd like to see that my bill assessed to the city and then pay me for my services. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this matter for this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at seven forty-two. Open the discussion to council?
What I heard from Mr. Ankoviak didn't sound like reason, unreasonable expectations for a process. How do we resolve this? Is there an appeal that he can make somewhere?
The appeal is to you this evening, Mr. Redding. This is a public hearing. You've reviewed the special lot assessments. The way the ordinance is written for lawn grass, I can speak directly to that. The ordinance that council approved, I believe it was in twenty seventeen when they approved that ordinance, was that the notice is put on the property, and I believe you have seventy-two hours to have it mowed, and if you don't mow it, the city can go in and abate it. If you have grass that's longer than eight inches, you should probably mow that grass, the neighbors that live next to it that are maintaining their lawns. Should not have to live next to weedy lots. If you own property in the city and you're a landlord, I would encourage landlords, drive by your properties weekly, and if the grass looks like it's getting out of control, you'll notice it before it gets to eight inches. That would be my recommendation to council as a policy. And it's the policy we have right now that council adopted in twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen.
I know with, with water bills, if a tenant is behind, if, and they receive a shut-off notice, that the, there is also a notice that goes to the landlord. Is that something that we could do similarly?
So we always invoice the property owner, whether it is a rental or owner occupied. The property owner would be the one that receives the invoice for any charges like this.
And in this case, it was invoiced to him and sent to his home address.
So I'm talking prior to the invoice, prior to, to us.
Abating the project.
Right.
So if the grass is at eight inches, and we have to send a letter, that's two to three business days in Alleghen to get the letter there, then it's two to three business days to come back. And if there's a weekend in the middle, you're looking at another ten days. That eight inches of grass, if it rained, now could be twelve to fourteen inches. And if you're a neighbor living on that street, you shouldn't be subjected to live next to someone with a weedy lot. And that was the policy that council set back again, when they regulated it to eight inches, and they set that process. The other abatements, we do go through that process. You have ten days, you've made aware of it, we work with you to get compliance, but with the lawn grass, it is, you know, we post a property.
Thank you. So, thoughts?
I was just going to ask, so we did send out a bill, August third, is that what, is it just a one-time notice of the bill, or?
No, we also.
We also do send out monthly reminders on anything that's, that's passed due. To the property owner. In this specific case, yes, I can't say that every single one is, but I would assume that, you know, especially with these, the blight in that, that we invoice the property owner. And in this case, it was. I haven't looked at, like, verified that with all the other ones, but.
Can staff address that lot that he was referring to?
So the lot that he is referring to is a city-owned lot that's between two rentals on Monroe. It is roughly, I think, twenty-five feet wide, if that. It's probably ninety percent forested. The land that is mowed by one of the neighbors, I assume, is up along the sidewalk. It was just brought to my attention today that the city was not mowing that, and that's going to be addressed tomorrow. I received that invoice this afternoon. At no time in my seven years as being the city manager for the city of Alleghen has anyone ever come to me about that lot and said, hey, how are you maintaining it? But it did come to my attention this afternoon. I will be working with DPW tomorrow for us to figure out a process to maintain it. I understand the Public Spaces Garden is, or Public Spaces Commission is a big fan of Monarch, Monarch Butterfly Gardens. Who knows? Maybe that's a good spot for a lot of milkweed to go and, you know, environmentally, you know, support, you know, the monarchs here. But we will ensure that the property owner, and I don't know which one of the, or the tenant on each side that mows that area, will, will make sure they don't have to worry about maintaining that, you know, small swath of land on Monroe.
Any more discussion on this?
I think it's a tough judgment call to make here on that particular case, and, you know, I don't know who else on this list might have had similar complaints and just didn't bother to come forward. It sounds like our policy might need some improvement or our process on this. But again, it's a tough thing. I'm just getting this information here. It'd be great if there was some better venue for appeals. I'm in a tough position because it's money we've spent already. I don't know how we forgive that money. I don't think Mr. Ankoviak's just here looking for free lawn mowing, but it sounds like we really do need to examine that process and see if there's some improvements we can make.
All right.
I'm assuming we do the invoicing like once a month, so to receive an invoice, the August third that was done for June thirtieth is.
So a lot of times, because we have a contract, we, a contracted vendor that we use, sometimes he doesn't get us the invoices right away. And then, yes, we would do it in our monthly process after we would receive that. So sometimes, you know, he does get those to us late, and it, you know, is after the fact.
Thank you, Tracy.
I have a question. I know it's out of line, or not, but recently a roof blew off, recently a roof blew off and the city cleaned it up. And so will that person be charged for that service?
If you're going to talk, why don't you come up? Not particularly, but.
Rachel. Yeah. No, I'm curious. I saw a few weeks ago, maybe a week ago, that a city dump truck was cleaning up the roof that blew off, fell off. And so if we're not going to actually charge folks for the services that are rendered, what are we doing? Because you're not asking residents if they want to spend that money that way, right? So while it's unfortunate, Mr. Ankoviak, that those, that yard was mowed however many times, it is what it is. It needs to be paid. You just recently were sitting up here talking about the Griswold? Yes? Wanting to charge particular amounts but not making enough money. And here we are again, needing to charge, needing to be paid for services rendered. I don't think it's that difficult to figure out.
Rachel, that one property with the roof that is going to be charged back to the property owner?
Sure, services rendered. So then services rendered for every other property owner.
Exactly.
And so it shouldn't really be a decision, nor should require a policy.
So what I see on this, my last comment on is these invoices are from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. These are, the first property that was mentioned was in twenty twenty-two, and Tracy's correct that that's where the invoices have been going, is the address per the county record. That's what our policy has been. That's we're doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing. So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dot eleven.
I'll support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item eight C, a public hearing for the sale of parcel five one dash two eight zero dash one one five dash zero zero, known formally as Pingree Park, in consideration of the land sale.
Thank you, Mayor. I will kick this off. Tonight is a required public hearing for the potential sale of parcel, what I'm just going to refer to as the Penigree Park, and it's the consideration of land sale. I want to be clear on the staff report that you are not required to decide on whether to sell this property immediately following the public hearing. I also want to clarify for city council that when we first started this discussion with the potential developer, last August, at your August fourteenth meeting, a full development proposal was submitted. So you saw the site plan in August, you saw the proposed treehouses, the quality that the treehouses were going to be, you know, that would be developed on this lot. So I just wanted to make sure we have all the facts in front of us as we have this discussion this evening. As my staff report mentioned, two weeks ago, we became aware of several neighbors that live on South Main Street. By several, I mean one hundred percent of the neighbors that live on South Main Street shared with me their dissatisfaction with this proposal moving forward. I met the neighbors out there last Saturday, about a week ago, at two o'clock in the afternoon, met with ninety percent of the neighbors. A couple were out of town, and I ensured them that I would share the petition with council, that was part of the packet that was submitted. However, there is a process when we talk about land sales that the city owns. So that started last late summer. We entered into a due diligence agreement for Mr. Leverance to move forward with seeing if this was even possible. He's gone through that process. He informed us several weeks ago that he would like to move forward and consider the sale now. And for us to sell property in the city of Alleghen that the city owns, we have to do a notice three consecutive weeks in the local newspaper, which for this is the Alleghen County News, and we have to have a public hearing no more than, I think it is, seven days after the last notice in the paper, and so we're well within that. So tonight is just a public hearing and discussion amongst council, and I want to reiterate that you are not required to decide on whether to sell the property immediately following. This is also a land sale of public property. Our charter requires a supermajority, five-sevenths, so even though you have six people here, it's five-six now, for it to be in the affirmative. Any questions for staff?
If we were approving a land sale.
If you like to approve it, you would need at least five members. A four or three vote would be a failure.
And if we, this, this is not a resolution, so we don't, do we need to table it, or if we don't want to act on it tonight?
Nope, you don't need to have to table it.
Because it's just a public hearing.
It's just a public hearing.
Good. All right. So I will open the public hearing at seven fifty-four. Anyone who wishes to speak on this matter, you can approach the podium, and I'm sure there's a handful of you. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Gavin McCracken. We live at one seven six South Main Street. As Joel mentioned, I started a petition against the sale of the land, and a hundred percent of the homeowners on the street have signed it and are all against it. Since you've already all heard that, Joe did mention wanting to bring his road in from the other side and not disturb one seven six Main Street, and I think that would alleviate a lot of the tension and anger that some of the residents are feeling. But in order to use a little bit more of the time, I want to reiterate what council member Dave was talking about, about being proactive and letting people know what's going on with the development projects, because not everybody has a friend on the council like Joe does. And, I mean, he came to you with a proposal for the land, but I know other people who have been looking for listings for it, because they would like to purchase a little bit of it. And that's, the common person just waits for listings to come. They don't have friends on the council that they can just come up to and say, hey, can we have a little bit of this land, or can we buy this? So. So being proactive, and we don't even know what a master plan is, you know, the common person doesn't. So, yeah, I think what he was saying is a great idea to let people know what the development ideas are and what's even possible on their land. And, yeah, basically all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Tim Sky. I live at the very end of the road where this development's going up. And I just got here, so I don't know what's all been said. But the transparency of this whole sale is really a big thing, I think. You know, just all of a sudden this property was up for sale, or not even for sale. Just all of a sudden it's going to somebody. Nobody knew what was going on. And, you know, I signed the petition, you know. We just don't know what's happening there. And all of a sudden, now it's a big thing. When it's supposedly been in the works for like the past year, according to the homeowner, the possible owner of the property. So, you know, don't really like that. And, you know, yeah, like you said, the coming in from a different angle is totally different. But it'll disrupt a lot at the end of that road. So.
Great.
Came in late, I know.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joe Leverance, one forty-eight Mill District Road. I am the developer. I am not a big developer. I'm not some big shot from Grand Rapids or Kalamazoo or from Chicago. I'm just a hometown boy right here in Alligan. My wife and I own a mom and pop shop down here in Alligan. I can't help that people don't get involved in their community. I can't help that they don't follow what happens here in the council. I can't help that they don't read the newspaper. I really don't like the accusation that there was some sort of underhanded or backroom deal made with this. I'm friends with several of you on council, not just one of you. All right? This count, this entire process has been in the public. It was brought to Joel. Joel said, put it before council. I submitted a proposal to council. Council received that. I've gotten three unanimous votes from council to move forward with this project. It's an awesome project. It really is cool. Considering the, the land and what could go on it, this is probably the best thing that could go in there. Tiny houses on stilts, right? You know, stilts are, are, we're talking telephone poles. Telephone poles are trees, all right? So I'm not building foundations. I'm not pouring concrete. I'm pounding trees into the ground and building the houses above it. I'm not damaging the ecology at all. The very first thing I did with this, once you guys said that, that we could move forward in investigating this, was I contacted Eagle. Now, some of these folks didn't know who Eagle was when I talked to them, all right? Eagle is formerly known as the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency. They're involved in everything to do with the environment in the state of Michigan. All right? So before I could even think about doing this under Joel's advice, was that I needed to check with them if this was even possible. All right? The, the EPA or Eagle is the be-all, end-all of what goes on when you're talking about wetlands, whether you're talking about flood plain, whether you're talking about next to the water, whether you're talking about habitat, endangered species habitat, endangered species of wildlife. They are the be-all and end-all who makes the decisions on what can happen on a piece of property that is within these certain boundaries. And there's three different sections. There's Section thirty-one, Section three oh three, Section three oh one. And all three of these have to be approved by the EPA or Eagle. So I had a walkthrough with them. They went through, they looked at all the plant species, they looked at the, the layout of the land. They advised me on what was the best way to approach this. They didn't see any red flags in any danger to the environment with what I was planning. They did recommend that I do a wetland delineation survey because there is obviously wetlands in the former right-of-way, but the island itself looks dry. So I did that. Thirty-five hundred dollars, all right? Did the wetland delineation study, got that all marked out. The scientist that did the wetlands delineation study was the one who told me at first, coming in by the wastewater treatment or the water treatment plant was not a good idea because I would have to cross wetlands in order to get to the island. And he highly recommended, because he's been in the business for twenty-some years dealing with the Environmental Protection Agency, that they don't care what it costs me or how inconvenient it is for me to bring in my road or do my project. What they care about is the environment. So I can say, oh, it's going to cost me less to come in this way. It'll be easier because it's all nice flat land and all this. And they're going to go, yeah, but you're crossing wetlands. But if you come over here on South Main and come down the hill, you don't have to go through any wetlands. So that's the least impact on the environment would be to come in that way. So that was the advice I got. So I changed it. I moved it over to come in that way. So just as we were ready to kind of kick off this thing, now we get the concerns from the individuals on South Main Street. Initially, it was about the street traffic and noise. And then it was about eagles on the property and environmental impacts and all this kind of stuff. So there are no eagles on the island. An eagle's nest is like four feet in diameter. It's huge. I walked the entire island, looked up at every single tree. There is no eagle's nest. All right? They already looked at the plant life. They didn't see any plants in there that were endangered species. They didn't see any critters on there that were endangered species. They said that they, that I should look into making sure that there are no endangered species by going to the government agency involved in that, which if they feel there is, they will require me to do that check. They will, once they look at my plan, because it was hard to come up with it without a survey and all the wetland delineation, it's hard to come up with a plan until you know where you can put stuff. And he said, you know, once you have that, then you can lay it out so that you put your things, your buildings or your structures or your bridges or your roads, where it's going to have the least amount of environmental impact, which is exactly what I did. Okay? He recommended that if necessary, they would require me to do an environmental impact study, which I would be fine with. So there's nothing I'm going to do on there that's going to damage the environment or the ecology because they're not going to let me get away with it. I do everything by the book. All right? I pull my permits. I have my inspections. And then when I get my inspections, then I get my certificate of occupancy or my permits or whatever. And that's the way I work. I don't play games with that. I didn't play games with, with the building we built, you know, down in the Mill District. I did it by the book. I passed every single inspection on the first try. I got my certificate of occupancy on the first try because we do everything by the book. And that's the way I'm going to do it here. Now, if the EPA tells me that I have to come in on South Main Street, then I guess I have to come in on South Main Street. I talked to Mr. McCracken. I thought we had a, a, an agreement. We shook hands. I thought we were actually developed a rather nice rapport. Monday, I met with Joel and the water treatment facility manager and Doug Suarez to see about coming in on the south end. And Joel informs me that the petition went through anyway. That even though I was coming in on the south end, these folks still were demanding that we stop the, the development. So it sounds like I'm damned if I do or damned if I don't. So coming in on the south end was going to be extremely complex. It was going to require moving the scent, the fence. It was going to require changing the, the survey, changing the description on the city side and on my side. The fence is probably going to cost about ten grand. The survey change is going to cost me about three grand. Changing the, the road because there is wetlands in there that I'm going to have to avoid. We're talking thirty-five thousand dollars, probably more, to come in at the south end. And if I'm going to get all this slack from these folks regardless, then I'm just going to follow the EPA's regulations or recommendations and come in on South Main Street. I would like to work with these people. I wanted them to be friends with me. I had met Tim. I actually went up to his door. I knocked on his door, introduced myself to him and had a nice discussion with him. I thought him and I were cool there too. But apparently we're not. So I know you guys got a tough decision to make because you got to figure out, you know, you want peace in the community. And you want to see things come to Alligan that are cool. And, and this is a cool project. We already know that Alligan needs hotel rooms. The, the company that was going to do the hotel here downtown has already done all the market analysis. We know that we need short-term rental, weekend rental properties in this town. So I'm fulfilling a need. And it's going to be a cool fulfillment of that need. You know, when you think of what else could go down there, you know, it's rated R three or R one, what was it? Pardon me?
So it's master plan for RSF.
Yeah. So it, it could be some variations of, of residential that could go down there. So, you know, if somebody is crazier than me would want to go down there and build a bunch of houses on stilts, I guess they could because everything has to be at least five feet off the ground or they're not getting a permit. That's just the way it works. So I, I hope you guys, you know, will understand I'm into this over ten thousand dollars. And I went into this because I had such support from you guys. I had three unanimous votes to move forward with this. I don't like the fact that we might have some enemies over here. I wish we could have worked it out where everybody would be happy. Sometimes that's just not possible. So I will, I will still do my best to get along with these folks if, if this moves through. And if they choose to be my enemy, I guess, I guess I have enemies. That's all I got, guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a second to say that the petition that I created, I created before the meeting that Joe requested with the people of the street. And I had it all signed before the meeting with the people of the street. So what me and Joe did discuss happened, my petition happened before all of that. So I would just like to reiterate that, that it wasn't something that we tried to do behind his back.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right. And I will close this public hearing at eight oh nine and open up the discussion to council. Again, this is just a discussion.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the discussion or the decision we're making tonight is a public hearing to consider the sale of this. We're not selling it tonight. I see no agreement. I see no other information about the sale other than, yeah, we're open to selling this. Is that?
That's my understanding.
So I think Joe Leverance is probably a good match for this development. I, I think he does understand the character of Alligan. I think he's been a good player in the community for a long time now. I think he will be able to resolve some of these issues and I think he will work in good faith with the neighbors. It's unfortunate that this came to this point where the conflict is here at our table right now. I think it would be great to provide an arena for them to try to resolve some of this. There, there may be some misunderstanding that's just happened because of a lack of communication throughout this process. Yeah, maybe this whole thing comes down and Joe just has to be the bad guy and force it down the neighbor's throat. I don't think that needs to be the way this goes. I really think Joe's a good match for the development. I think the neighbors need some more information. I'm open to moving forward with considering this for sale. And, you know, I, I'd like to see it worked out. And I'd like to see the city be able to provide an arena for that discussion to happen.
I was a little concerned about the subtle accusation that there has been a lack of transparency. We have had all public meetings. This has been discussion and open forum for the last better part of a year. Nothing has been behind closed doors. This has all been a public conversation now. Maybe it would have been a good idea to, to do what sounds like Joel has, has done in the meantime now to, to pull in residents and just have a, a conversation. But this was not ever meant to be something that was happening in a backdoor deal. This was somebody who approached the city and said, I want to buy this vacant parcel of land and has a great idea for it and has a history of doing great development in Alligan. And it sounded like a great win for the city. And so we, as he said, have had three unanimous votes to support his idea. And I'd love to find a way to move forward with the people on South Main and that, and that neighborhood where it was, it's amenable to everyone. But we, I, I still think it's a good idea. I, I think it's, I think the impact to the area was, is, well, is minimal. The, the number of units is, is pretty small. So it's not like it's a eighty-room hotel that's going to have people in and out all the time. It's, it's a probably going to be a weekend type thing for the most part and a limited number of units. So I don't think there's going to be a huge number of cars up and down that street. But I'd like to be able to continue that conversation and see where we can work things out. Any other discussion?
I'm fine moving forward with continual consideration of the sale of this property. Going through the original proposal, it's not a large housing development. It's not this massive thing. And I think maybe some people are thinking that it's much more massive of a thing than what their, their understanding of it is. It's a parcel that's been city-owned land. Somebody came to us and said, hey, would you like to sell it? Which anybody can do at any time to any of our city properties. They can give us a proposal. Been open this whole time. We've had our public meetings. They're recorded. They're on YouTube. They've been recorded, distributed. Our agendas are on our website with our full packets available for everybody to read that wants to read them. That has, will have all the same information we have. So I'm very proud of how open we are to the public and how open we are to always taking public comment to making sure that we're available and we're putting out our information. So I think this has been very open proposal that's been on the agenda for better part of almost a year now. So I enjoy looking to continue the, the possibility of the sale of this property.
I'd like the, the conversation to continue as well. And I'm very hopeful that after the meeting this evening, that there can be more conversation with the community members of that neighborhood. Hopefully some of the concerns can be addressed. You can have some input into that. But I do feel like some of that, the information that was in the petition has been addressed. I hope you guys feel that way as well, that you got some answers to some of those concerns that you had. But yeah, I'd like to go forward as well.
So are we, this is not a resol, we're not, we don't need a vote on this. We're just having a conversation, just to re-clarify. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so we can have this, we can allow more conversation to happen before we make any final decisions on a sale. Which I think is the best course forward.
So if council's looking for advice and per the city charter, the city manager gets to participate. So I get to give you my advice. I'd recommend that you don't, you know, decide tonight on whether to sell this or not. I'd recommend that you don't, you know, decide tonight on whether to sell this or not.
Yep.
Comments I heard is, you know, you'd like to see us move forward with this, right? We, I mean, the city collectively. You would like to see some communication, some opportunities for neighbors to, you know, be part of that dialogue. I'm gonna say something I will probably regret tomorrow morning. You are never gonna get 100% agreement on any idea, ever. So you've had a couple conversations this evening about, well, yeah, we need to get everyone on the same page and, you know, everyone will agree. That just isn't gonna hap, I mean, that doesn't happen in households where people love each other. It's gonna be hard on neighborhood streets. But a direction that, you know, staff work with the developer who came back in August, shared his vision, maybe have another community meeting, listen to some of the concerns. You know, when I was out there that Saturday, a very honest concern was just, where's the truck gonna park during construction when they're delivering all the lumber? Hey, that's, that's a significant concern because it will block like every driveway. So we're gonna have to figure that out. Access from the south side, we did meet Joe Leverance out there. Doug Suarez is our water utility manager. The unfortunate thing for that is, as you can see on that screen, that white circle at the bottom, that's a well. And we can't have sewer lines within 200 feet of a public well that provides the public water for the, all the citizens in the city of Aligan. So we, you know, Joe was looking for options to, how not to make this, you know, come off South Main. We looked at some other locations around the water treatment plant, if we could just relocate this idea somewhere else. Because there, I believe there is some merit to this idea. We weren't able to find those other locations, but we can continue to have that conversation. I think we need to continue this at a brisk pace, not a brisk pace to get an answer, but the neighborhood doesn't wanna hear four months down the road, you know, "Hey, council sold this." And, you know, so we need to, you know, move with some attention on this discussion. And if council wants to direct staff to work with the neighborhood and the developer on that process, that's something we can, you know, work with. If there's a couple council members that wanna be part of that discussion, we can, you know, enlarge in the circle. Just, we have to keep the Open Meetings Act in consideration, and it can't be no more than three of you.
I think it, it sounds to me like council would like to have staff work with the residents and see how we can maybe answer questions and see how we can find a way forward. All right.
You can make that a motion.
I can make that a motion.
Staff would appreciate getting verbal direction to do that.
So I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion. I move that city staff have dialogue with residents of the neighborhood and the developer to, I don't know, discuss this project further.
It's moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you all. Appreciate your input. Item number nine, public comment. This is for items not on the agenda. If anybody has anything they would like to voice, please approach the podium. You have three minutes for your public comments.
Pete Dantrovjak, I'm not opposed to this circular, the circle around, but I'm gonna watch my properties very carefully this time. They did, redid the road over by the Iron Bridge. They came to me and they said, "In order for us to do this, we have to buy so much property from you that you own right here." And I told them, "You don't have to buy it. I will give it to you." I didn't watch what went on there. They put the street in. I have a house there with a driveway, and they didn't put me a driveway in. So now to access my property, I gotta drive over the curb to get up to my house there. I talked to the city manager about it. He said, "Well, you own the property next door to it. You can use the driveway there." I'd like him, if he'd have looked at the driveway, he'd have seen that it's impossible. You can go in that driveway, but then the only way to get to this other one is to drive down the, the, on your sidewalk. And that's what I was doing. I was driving in my driveway, going around the tree there, driving down the sidewalk to my property. So what happens? The police come and they post a sign on my door saying, "You can't drive that way around there and go on it." I went to the city road person out there on, on airway drive, asked him, "When am I going to get a driveway to my house?" He said, "I'll talk to the city manager about it." That's been about two months ago. That road was put in there about a year ago or so, and I'm still waiting for a driveway the way it was before. They tore it all up and put this road in and didn't give me one. So when, I own a couple pieces of property around this round around. I just want to know, I'm gonna watch that and make sure I get a driveway to these properties. Because if you don't, your chances of probably getting one are slim here with the city because no one will acknowledge this mistake they made. And so I've lost the use of this driveway there, except for driving up over the curb. And I don't like to do that. I'm getting tired of doing that, and I would ask you to maybe do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? State your name and your address.
Joe Novak. My current residence is 201 Ray Street. We have a thing on here, we're underlined, for a payment of $747.50, I believe, for a Blythe cleanup. Last year I had, I dealt a lot with Jay Gibson, and him and one of the city workers worked, worked with me a lot, seeing as I was the only one able to do anything on the property residing there. I'm wondering what the payment, the neglected payment is for on this, for the, for Blythe My understanding, the last time we had anything done, there was, there was a dumpster brought to the property. Mr. Jay informed me that it would be put on the taxes for having the dumpster sitting there. That's, that's the only thing I know of to where any money would've been added anywhere as to where, for this.
So this, this is public comment, so this is really meant for you to talk to us? We don't usually have a conversation during public comment, but I would suggest that you contact city staff, and they can clarify what that bill...
And we'll stick around after the meeting. We can talk to you after the meeting.
All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
This is my first time.
That's fine, totally fine. I know, it's, it's confusing. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to section 10, Written Petitions and Reports from Special Committees, 10A, Adoption of Resolution 24.12 to Approve the Request from the Aligan Chapter of Kezoo Folk Life for a Charitable Gaming License. Leah, you're coming up?
I'm Leah, and I am the Kamazoo, Aligan Chapter of the Kamazoo Folk Life, and I'm requesting that I get a gaming license. And the reason for that gaming license is, a lot of times my grants, the funding, the state funding has been cut. And we're trying to be creative in raising funds so that we can continue to do the projects that we do in Aligan. And as you know, we've got all the concerts going on downtown, the gazebo, and we've got a huge event at the school on May 4th. And we'd hope to have that license back by the 4th so that we could raise funds in order to put that into the festival for next year. But the state of Michigan is making me jump through a ton of hoops, and you are one of them. So I'm here to ask for that piece of paper that I need to send to the state, saying that I actually am a legitimate nonprofit in Aligan. And if there's any profit here, I'd like to know where. Because I've never seen any. But we have a lot of fun. That's what we do.
Do you have any...
No, this is very simple. We do this all the time for nonprofits.
Yep. So any questions on this, or...
Assume it's like 50/50 raffles and things like that, Leah?
Yeah, that's, that's what we'd like to do.
Okay.
Yeah. And we wouldn't do, we don't do them very often. We do them at the church, obviously, because the funding at the church, we don't have many members. So at the concerts, we do it there. Not saying that we might not do it down at the gazebo, I just don't know, but we'd really hope to do it at that big May 4th event. Maybe next year. At least we can get the paperwork done.
I'd make a motion to approve, let's see, a resolution for a charity gaming license.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Okay.
Motion passes.
Good.
So I think I have to sign something. Do I have to sign something? You do? Okay.
Can I get that this evening, or...
Item 10B, Request from the Aligan Area Arts Council.
The Arts Council is once again begging, I mean, asking if we could use the Griswold for our art camps this summer. And it would be, it's the first week, I believe, in August. And I know that it's not available on Wednesday, but we'll do a lovely plein air activity that day. This is almost our 20th year doing art camp, and it's, we're looking forward to it once again. We have excellent instructors and a really good assistant, just saying. And I have appreciated your generosity in the past. So that's my request. Thank you.
Great. I did wanna let you know that we're always happy to help you all. The council has been discussing how we're gonna, discussing policies on how we do our fee structure. So next year, we'll have to see what that looks like, but I just wanted to let you know.
Absolutely.
It won't affect this year, but next year...
I'll start saving my quarter.
I just wanted to, didn't want you blindsided.
Couple, couple quick questions. Is this just for the basement, or are you guys gonna need the theater?
Just for the basement.
Just for the basement, so you don't need any sound?
They do wanna go up and walk on the stage, though, so that's a big event.
But you don't need sound or light or anything?
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay.
No.
And this is a free event for the kids of the community to come out to, or very minimal cost?
They actually pay so we can cover the cost of instructors and supplies.
Very minimal cost, okay.
Correct.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? And we have an art show on the last Friday, and it's quite exceptional. And possibly we could put some things up in our new studio. So, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion on this. Or I guess we have to have a discussion of what we wanna do.
I will make a motion to approve the request from the Aligan Area Arts Council.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item 10C, Request from Timber Cannabis Company. Sure, yeah. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Stefan McIntyre. I'm the general manager of Timber Cannabis over at 133 Marshall Street in Aligan. We're just requesting that we are able to put up a A-frame sign. I wanna say your standard A-frame sign. I think it stands about three feet tall, two feet wide. And that is just to go in the, is that the egress area, where the grass is going on the other side of the sidewalk, or in our own woodchip area if we have to, next to the sidewalk. Reason being is the way that our, our store is set up, we are just behind the, it's an old credit union that's there. I think it's owned by TKH Group now.
Yep.
And the way that our building's set up with our existing sign on our building that says timber, unfortunately, when people are driving past, obviously, not with the construction there right now, but when people are normally driving past, unless they're coming from downtown, it's hard for them to see our business. We've had a lot of comments from people that have shopped with us saying that it's, you know, "Oh, we didn't even know you guys were here." So we're just looking for permission to be able to put that A-frame up. Nothing crazy. It looks actually identical to what's on that screen there. The only difference is, is that when construction ends, there is a possibility of us hoping to keep that sign out there or in our area, just to allow people, when they're driving past from the uphill up there, that they're able to come down and see that we're open without having to real quick know to look right, you know? I mean, when I'm driving down the road, you know, I'm not gonna look very far past a building to see if they're there right. So just a little bit more eyesight on it. I'm hoping to get a little bit more of the community over there and continue to do what we do for Aligan, and, you know, that would help us a lot. So thank you very much.
So if I'm correct, what we're talking about tonight is just during construction. Doesn't, we're not talking about anything after construction.
Correct, yeah. Just during the construction.
Yeah.
And it should be mentioned that staff is supportive. You did a similar thing for the Aligan County Fairgrounds.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's...
I think whatever we can do to help the businesses right now would be greatly appreciated.
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary sign.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item 10D, Request from Wings of Hope Hospice and Palliative Care, Inc.
Hello. I am Sherri Schultz, and I am here representing Mark Heather, who should be right here. We both did the fundraiser last year at the Griswold for It's a Wonderful Life. We showed the movie. It's audience participation, and I think, Delora, you went. And it's hard to explain it until you go there. We had about 100 people show up, raised about $2,600 for Wings of Hope Hospice, which is a nonprofit hospice for end-of-life care, in case you don't know. And we're hoping to do it again this year, Saturday, November 23rd. We hit the wrong day last year because Michigan, U of M played their football game, so a lot of people didn't come because of that. So we're hoping just before Thanksgiving that we'll be able to get more people. We copied the idea from a movie theater in Chicago that did this kind of audience participation. And just to give you an idea, Mark played Santa Claus. He does a great job. He gave audience prompts such as booing at evil Mr. Potter, yelling cat calls at Violet, cheering George on his victories, dancing in her seats, and actually, everybody got up and danced at their seat. It was fun. And of course, ringing the bell when Clarence gets his wings. So we're hoping to do it. I understand, last year we paid $200 for Ryan to be there. He did an awesome job. I think we left the auditorium in great shape, so the city didn't have to pay people to come clean up after us. Also, I wanted you to know that Mark and I paid for every single expense, advertising, the props. We gave props to people, so that 100% of the donations and the ticket sales went to Wings of Hope and the Wings Home. So by you giving us a, you know, the nonprofit price, that helped give more to a local organization that I think probably everybody's been touched by it, either with family, friends, or someday you probably will want that. And just so that you know, the money of fundraisers like this goes towards people's end-of-life care that don't have insurance. So the people that don't have insurance are getting the same care as those people with insurance. So it's a wonderful organization. So we're asking for the same donation. And as an aside, I know you are talking about next year's structuring... And as an aside, I know you are talking about next year's structuring nonprofit fees in the future. And I guess I just want to say, Mark and his family own a business downtown. My husband and I, in case you don't know, we own the Secretary of State's office. We pay a lot of taxes, although today I looked, and I thought I was gonna quote a big number, and I see that a lot of our taxes goes to everything but the city, but there is, there is a lot that still goes to the cities. So I was kind of, I have to admit, I was shocked. The schools get the vast majority of it, but... So we are city people, we're not outsiders coming in and asking for use of a great building. And I guess as a business person myself, the more people you can get in to use these kinds of facilities, and the Griswold's amazing, you never know that those people may never have been there before, may want to rent it for their events. So it's another way to kind of get visibility for a great building and hopefully keep it rented out.
All part of our discussions, absolutely.
So that's just kind of an aside.
Yeah.
But I heard your conversation. So that's what we're asking for, is the same two hundred dollars to pay Ryan. I assume it would be him, he did a great job. And to encourage everybody to come, because it was fun. And it's one of those movies you can see every year and know that you're benefiting a great event, so.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Just a quick couple.
Sure.
Your application didn't really say whether you're serving alcohol or not. Is that still to be determined?
Yes. No, we will definitely, because those sales are, that helps the bottom line.
So you'll be pulling a nonprofit liquor license temporarily?
Wings of Hope does that.
Okay.
Because it's, they're, we're doing the event on their behalf, but they're the ones that get the liquor license. They, they do it a lot. And as another aside, on May 18th, I think it is, they do their big auction, their fundraiser, and if you haven't gone to that, that's fun. But yes, they handle that.
So, and then of course, the other ones, the sound and light, that you'll need Ryan or somebody there, of course, to be able to run the, the sound and light for you.
Yes. He did that great last year, and Mark is very familiar with sound systems and stuff, so it worked out.
I saw those, not checked on your application, that's why I was just, I thought you had said them earlier.
Oh, sorry. That came in from Wings of Hope, so, sorry for the disjoint there.
I'd make a motion to approve this, with the cost of the sound and light still being paid, and the fee for the use of the Griswold and the Merla Lounge being waived.
I'll support that, as long as you do list the City of Alligan as a sponsor of the event.
And we did. And you noticed on the program, we listed everybody that gave in kind and monetary support, and the City of Alligan was named, and we have no problem doing that.
And then you're not using the balcony, right?
Not unless we get tons of people.
Just with the liquor license, that's why I'm wondering.
So it's been moved in? It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes.
Thank you. God bless you.
Item 11, reports from boards, commissions, and city offices. Item 11A, city boards, commissions, and area agencies. 11A1, Downtown Development Authority, April meeting. I will take this one. Quickly, we discussed the proposed rules and regulations for sidewalks. That includes signage and all, all those kind of things. This is a second review of that draft. We also talked about the Mayhem Park Improvement Project, that we've successfully gotten, the city has gotten a hundred thousand dollar Consumers Energy Foundation grant. This is a four hundred thousand dollar project. We've also gotten a hundred sixty thousand dollar award from MBDC. And we also have gotten, we're using the crowdsourcing fundraiser called Patronicity, and that's through the MBDC. And if, have we been approved for that?
No, it hasn't launched yet. Planned to be launched before the end of the month, then it'll go through June 30th. So the MBDC will match up to fifty thousand dollars raised through that crowdsourcing.
Thank you, Parker. We also talked about the Hubbard Street Parking Lot Improvement Project, which has been, we've talked about quite a bit. We've just been talking through that, and there's still great support from the DDA on getting that done. And Parker also shared with us that the Match on Main grant is back, it was temporarily gone, but is back now, and we have, we can have up to two applicants, and we had two applicants from the city, one from Hidden Valley Gaming, which I think is kind of cool. They're the one little business located by the Regent, or, yeah, on the backside of the Regent. And then also Tilt. So that's, that's exciting that they are doing that. And then we also discussed the, some issues with the shared dumpster program, probably growing pains, but especially the dumpster that's out next to the Regent. There's been some issues with quote-unquote illegal dumping, people throwing regular garbage into the recycle bins, which then costs, we get penalized for that, the city, we get fined for that. And so we were discussing if there are ways to, to alleviate that from happening, putting a camera on it, closing that backside where you come in, come in that little back entryway, and you can't see how the bins are marked. So if we close that off and just have people go through the gates, then you see the recycle and trash markings more clearly, but we're just trying to figure out a better way to do that. And that's, I think, about all I had for that. Item 11A2, Wellhead Protection Plan Committee, from Dave, you want to?
Yeah. The, part of the agenda was around Bridge Fest and the wellhead protection, participating in that. But the, the part of the discussion that I was most interested in during the meeting was around the testing of our entire wellhead range. So if, if it's a ten-year wellhead range, meaning that the wellhead protection area extends out to what water will come through the aquifer over the next ten years, that extends outside of city limits. So it comes to partnerships with the township to identify wells that need to be capped. And then another topic we discussed, there, there is funding available for those activities. If we make proposals, we can get matched and even just fully funded on some of those activities. The other one that we discussed was finding ways to do PFOS testing further out than just at the well itself, so that we can anticipate any plumes that might be making their way towards the city wells. Again, two really good topics. Hopefully, we get funding to do those and find a way to partner with the township to make those happen. And the funding source really appreciates partnerships with other municipalities. So it's great that we've got representation from the township on that board.
Thanks. It's actually really fascinating. Item 11A3, Public Spaces Commission. Bill's not here. Parker, you're gonna take it?
Bill is absent, so I will take this. Thank you, Mayor Byrd. It was a long meeting. We met for about two hours and fifteen minutes, but we covered a lot of ground. We, I shared updates on the improvement projects for Mayhem Park and Rossman Park. Mayhem, that Mayor Byrd just covered also in the DDA review. Rossman Park, I let them know about the decision not to go forward with the improvements there by the city council. In review of the Mayhem Park discussion, we reviewed that Patronicity crowdsourcing initiative. And the Public Spaces Commission is very passionate about keeping the trees and the current landscaping that kind of exists in the area. And in some of the concept plans, it shows all new landscaping being input. So city staff is meeting to review how we will move forward with that aspect of the plan. As always, we touch on Oakwood Cemetery, talked about the upcoming Living History Cemetery tour that's taking place on May 30th and June 1st. We have a board member of the Public Spaces who's very interested in green burial. He keeps bringing that up, so that conversation is kind of ongoing at the city staff level. Arbor Day will be recognized on Friday of this week at 10:00 a.m. There will be a tree planted in front of the Alligan District Library this year. So board members are invited to come out for that. What else here? There's a Spongy Moth Workshop that happened last weekend. Board members are invited to attend that as well. We addressed some dead trees in the public redaway that were removed over along the county courthouse parking lot on Water Street. And then there have been ongoing discussions about, I just kind of generalized them as riverfront improvements. There were some trees, I want to say four of them, that were removed along the riverfront. A couple of years ago, they were diseased, and we had an arborist stop us to have those removed. So the Public Spaces Commission has been working for a while now on solutions on replacing those trees in some sort of fashion. So that conversation continued, as well as some sort of replacement, if you will, for where the zip line was. It's right now just a big concrete pad. So what we can kind of do in that area, and right now, the idea being kicked around is a set of swings. That would be a feature to the riverfront, added in addition to the splash pad and fireplace, and just another gathering spot down there. There was a ribbon cutting for the Alligan Conservation District. On this past Saturday, board members were invited to attend there. I was unable to, so I don't know if anyone made it themselves. And then there were updates at the very end. It was a long meeting, as I said. There's a wisteria vine located within the construction area near the roundabout. It won't be impacted, but it's an area that is currently city property, that the way the streets are kind of being readjusted, it's quite a ways off of the street's edge. So there's consideration that that property might be gifted to the nearby property owners, so they would have extra yard. But there is a wisteria vine that was relocated from the old county courthouse property to that area. And so we were kind of workshopping some ideas as where we could transplant that from that spot without having to lose it. And then Paula Mintec was quick to share with the board about the fifty thousand dollar set aside, approved by the city council a couple of meetings ago. And the board was tasked with researching ideas to bring forth on the repair or replacement of the Trestle Trail Bridge. So they had some homework at the end of the night. And that was about it.
Take a deep breath. Thank you, Parker. Item 11A4, Planning Commission, April meeting. I will take that. We spent a good deal of time talking about the proposed amendment to Section 402 and 1707.33, which we just had a failed vote, so we don't need to dwell on that. We also spent time looking at the draft, updated draft ordinance that's, we're, we're trying to put things in place to regulate new design and significant alterations to one and two-family residential structures in the city. So we, I'm drawing a blank on our good friend from PCI.
Lori.
Lori, wow, boy. Sorry, Lori. Sorry, Lori, if you're watching this. I've known Lori for years. Lori has been working through these and then bringing them to us, and so we kind of, as a group, decided that we want to kind of process through these and discuss them as they come in, but we're not gonna do anything officially, we're not gonna act on them officially until we get the whole thing together, until that's complete. So that, that was about it for Planning Commission. So we'll move on to 11B, Finance Department. 11B1, request to approve accounts payable and payroll. Peter?
It's requested that the city council approve accounts payroll in the amount of six hundred ninety-nine thousand twenty dollars and nineteen cents, and payroll on the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and fourteen cents, for total disbursement of eight hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and ten dollars and thirty-three cents. Motion to approve.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Move on to item 13, Communications from City Manager, Council, and Mayor.
Yeah, very quickly for council and the community. Other boards and commissions, we have a handful of vacancies. We have two vacancies on the Public Spaces Commission, two vacancies on the Planning Commission, and two vacancies on Positivity Alligan. So if you want to get involved in your town and help advise and make decisions, feel free to contact City Hall, and we'll have an application for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. Parker, anything from you?
Yeah, just a quick reminder, the Alligan Farmers Market starts next Thursday, May 2nd. Yes, it is that time. The Farmers Market will continue every Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Takes place in the Cutler Street Park, excuse me, the, the county parking lot on the corner of Water Street and Cutler Streets. It'll continue every Thursday, like I was saying, until the second week in October, which I believe is the 10th. So we've got a number of new vendors this year, some of the same old favorites, and then the Mobile Crave will be there for lunch as well, tacos and burritos and good stuff.
Outstanding. Kayla, anything from you?
Just a quick reminder, I know I've spoken to individuals about petitions for the upcoming election, since there are four seats that will be coming up in November for city council. I do have packets available at the front desk, as well as in my office, if anyone is wanting to run for city council. I'd be happy to speak with them if they have any questions.
Great. Thank you. Tracy, anything?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Teresa?
This is just a statement, and it's just my opinion there. I'm saddened that council doesn't support one of our biggest event holders in our town as far as bringing people into our city. And I know everybody has an opinion, and it's just sad, the amount of people, or what the fair does for us in our city. So, that's all.
Thank you. Delora?
I just had a couple things. First, there was a big community cleanup last Saturday for Earth Day, and Perrigo Foundation put that together, as well as the Sassy Olive, kind of created this initiative for downtown cleanup. And it was awesome. The downtown looked much, much better, and I appreciate everybody's efforts in doing that, and that was actually advertised through downtown Alligan as well. I kind of want to reiterate what Teresa said. I was also pretty disappointed with, with the vote for the event. I guess there's no time like the present to do that. I get that people have their own opinions, but that was frustrating, and I've already heard from Jason Watts, the chair of the Planning Commission as well, regarding that. And then I will not be at the meeting on May 13th. I had previously let city manager, mayor, and mayor pro temp know that, but just so everybody is aware, I will be gone.
Great, thanks. Dave, anything from you?
Update from the Solid Waste Planning Committee at the county level. If you see invites for the, from the Health Department for those events they do, where they welcome household hazardous wastes, those now are available to everyone in the county. It's a pilot program. I think they're running three events this year. They have a funding source, so it's not a new charge to anyone. It, it does reduce some of the overhead on managing those events, and I think it was a really wise decision on the part of the board to go ahead with that, and I hope they continue it. That was one of the items when I was talking with the administrators for that program, the solid waste planning. It's kind of a, a little bit of an à la carte. If we wanted to move forward with a millage to participate in those programs, we could just participate in the household hazardous waste. And I had considered, like, maybe that might be the right path for the city. But with those now going to countywide, and hopefully, again, they continue that, I guess the only other consideration would be if we felt like we could get the solid waste planning curbside pickup program, where they would negotiate the contract, they would manage the accounts, if we thought that was beneficial. I'd be happy to contact the administrators for that program, have them either provide a presentation or discuss options. I, I asked them how hard it would be to get an estimate. They said that they get estimates regularly, and so I, I think they can facilitate that discussion, so we can get an idea of how much would it really cost. I will say, I think I've mentioned this before, one of the considerations for that program is the funding available through the state law caps at fifty dollars a year per household. And if you've got recycling now, you probably know that you spend a lot more than that on that recycling curbside service. So there is a reality of, if we don't capture enough money, if we were to implement this, and it was citywide, and we didn't capture enough money through that millage, we would have to cover the remainder through general fund balance. So, again, a consideration. I'm not saying it wouldn't be economically feasible at that level. It's probably worth exploring, but I, it may not be a slam dunk that you're hoping for. So, said I'd provide an update on solid waste planning, that's, that's what I've got so far.
Great, thanks. Mike, anything from you?
Nothing tonight.
Peter?
No, I'm good.
I will also join with you, saying I'm disappointed that, I think, this event, that the fair could have brought a lot of people into town, and could have been good for the fair and good for businesses in the city. But life goes on, and we'll, we'll see what the future...
But life goes on, and we'll, we'll see what the future holds. Um, I'm excited that the Farmers Market is about to open. It's like, uh, the first Robins of spring. Uh, you know, now, uh, food trucks and, uh, rolling on the river is gonna start. What's that? Food trucks. Uh, it's all a very exciting time of year, so it's just nice to, uh, see that. And it's just been so nice to s, as the weather's been getting, uh, nicer, to see people sitting, uh, and the new furniture and hanging out downtown. It's just really exciting, uh, so. Thank you to everyone who came out and spoke, and I know not everybody weathered the entire meeting, but some of you did, and I appreciate that. And just thank you, uh, wanna thank you all. So, I will adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-six.